The May 11th, 2021, regular meeting of the Fairfield Board of Education is called to order. Present, we have Ms. Rotelli, Ms. Jacobson, Ms. Pitko, Mrs. Gerber, myself, Mrs. Vitale, Superintendent Cummings, Mr. Asa, Mrs. Max and Connolly, Mr. Peterson, and Mrs. Guernsey. I ask you all to please rise for the pledge. For the public listening in, we are not, we have some technical difficulties, so we're not live streaming to Fair TV, but you can call in, and we are also on, the WebEx is on the Fairfield Public Schools YouTube channel. This meeting will be posted to Fair TV after today. I apologize for that inconvenience. Go to call in public comment. The first caller is Laura Horn. Is she on the line?
We can. Great. Hi, this is Laura Horn. I'm just calling in, and I'm calling. My son is currently in fourth grade in the program, and this year has been nothing short of transformational for him. Despite the educational challenges that he's faced through this year with the pandemic, he is thriving in this program. And I would, I would say that each parent I've spoken with from the program would say the same about their own child. When our children were invited into the program last year, we were essentially informed that our children had unique educational needs, as identified by the district and by their teachers, and that these needs could not be met in their home schools. As such, we were asked whether or not we'd be willing to leave our home school and embark upon this new program, taking a risk. And many of us decided that the potential benefits of this program would outweigh those risks, and we joined. And never did I imagine just how far my son and his classmates would come in just such a short time. It was very clear, very quickly, that the assessment was correct, and that their needs were not being met in their home schools. And it's further clear that this program, because of the immersive nature of the program, cannot be replicated at the home school. As you all well know, the town's education budget is nearly $200 million. I understand there are many pet projects, I understand there are many competing interests, and that the budget is very tight. However, the cost to run this program is essentially the cost of two FTEs who take the form of the two incredible teachers leading this program. By my calculations, that's roughly .1% of the overall budget, and yet that supports up to 50 students a year. This program needs to continue to serve the rising fourth graders and all of the younger students who have unique educational needs and for whom the program could quite possibly be life-changing. Many of us who are arguing in support of the program are not doing so for our own children, who will be able to finish out the program. Instead, we're doing so on behalf of all of the younger students in the district who have the same needs as our own children. I ask you to remember that each student is unique, and that the district has a responsibility to develop each student to his or her fullest potential. Although the students of the Math Academy and those like them may be meeting and exceeding the educational standard, that does not mean that the district is currently meeting their needs if they remove this program. Thank you.
Thank you. The next caller, caller ending in 2448, Ms. Sharma.
Hi, this is Aunt Julie Sharma. Can you hear me?
Yes, and just, it's two minutes per caller, just to let you know.
Okay. Well, I'm calling to comment on the revised budget, and specifically on the elimination of Math Academy program from the budget. I want to reinforce everything that Laura Horn just said in her comments, and I want to reinforce the several letters and videos and comments and, you know, previous calls that every single parent and child has put in for the Board of Education in support of this program. I know you've heard several stories, several callers and read several letters, and, you know, I, I mean, it has been definitely life-changing for my children. I have a younger child who potentially, you know, would qualify for that program, and it really is, you know, a big disappointment to see that that opportunity will not be available to them, you know, going in a couple of years. So we would definitely like the Board of Education to consider that, like Laura, you know, several of the callers and the letters that you have received that have been said in the comments, that the needs of these students are not being able to met in the home schools. I think that has been, you know, supported by the home school teachers, the Math Academy teachers, you know. We would really hope that with the budgets that the Board of Education has, that they would focus on expanding this program, if the needs to be extended to more students. But even if there's criteria or the selection of the students, that the needs are met, and for these students to be able to do, you know, who are doing much better and need that kind of education program, with the support from the families and the teachers that they've gotten, that it should continue. So, like I said, I think a lot of letters and calls have said it, and I just would hope that the Board of Education would consider to continue this program, or at least make it clear to the parents and families, you know, deserving of the fact that why this program is really being eliminated, because it looks like, you know, the budget is definitely in support of that. So, that's what I'm calling for. Thank you.
Thank you for calling. Next caller, Shannon Messina, number ending 45673.
This caller is not currently on.
Thank you. Next caller, Bridget Perry, 4252.
This is Bridget Perry.
We can.
Okay, great. I live on Mona Terrace, and I'm a Fairfield mom and a licensed clinical psychologist here in town, and I wanted to speak in regards to Mr. Cummings' opening reopening update, which is item 7A on the agenda. I ask that you provide specific research data that you are using to support your continued mitigation strategies in the Fairfield Public Schools. And please refrain from using your default strategy, which is we are following CDC guidelines, and actually provide real research. If you continue to use the mitigation strategies, please show us the data that these strategies are effective and safe for our children. This fall, Fairfield families were willing to do what was deemed necessary without being provided data in order to start school, and again, in January, when we moved to full-time, because there were so many things unknown about this virus. And now we know that kids are at an extremely low rate for infection and transmission. Infection rates across our state are way down, and vaccination rates for the vulnerable population are at an impressively high rate in Connecticut. It's time to begin to foster a sense of reasonableness with respect to the mitigation strategies we are using in the Fairfield Public Schools. If you do plan to continue with full mitigation strategies for the remaining part of the school year, I respectfully ask for you to provide the data to show that these measures are safe and effective for our children. Thank you for hearing my comments.
Thank you. Next caller, Kimberly Grant, 0379. We can. Ms. Grant, go ahead. And just please state your address for the record.
Hello, my name is Kim Grant, and I live at 315 South Ancree Road. Regarding Mr. Cummings reopening update, item 7A on the agenda, given that the teachers have had the opportunity to be vaccinated, the 99.997% survival rate for those 19 and under, and Dr. Fauci recently saying the COVID transmission risk when outdoors is almost nonexistent, is there a plan to revisit any current guidelines between now and the end of the year, or are we planning to finish the year with current rules in place? Our children are now the most vulnerable population. Adults have seen a relaxation to mandates and requirements, while voiceless children suffer at the hands of adults meant to protect them. We know schools are some of the safest places when it comes to COVID-19. With all 16-year-olds and up in our state having the opportunity for a vaccine, we should not be forcing our children to wear masks. Whether a child wears a mask in school is a decision that should be made between a child, his parents, and his doctors. It's time we give our children the respect and freedoms that have been given to the adults of Connecticut. I am requesting no more barriers at lunch, just like adults at restaurants seated near strangers. I am also asking for an immediate stop to masks that outdoor reset, and while children are seated at their desks. Thank you for letting me speak.
Thank you, Ms. Grant. Next caller, Kelly Sadik, 5186.
Can you hear me?
We can. Just please state your address for the record.
Sure. My name is Kelly Sadik. I live at 74 College Park Drive. Two of my four children attend Fairfield Schools. My comment relates to Mr. Cummings reopening update. I am hopeful that tonight it will be a discussion about masks being optional at reset. First and foremost, the governor is lifting the outdoor mask mandate. Therefore, I would expect the schools to reflect this updated guidance immediately. Further, not only is community transmission the lowest it's been in months, outdoor transmission is essentially nonexistent. It is continually stated that there have been few, if any, documented cases of outdoor transmission. You've likely seen the New York Times article trending today, which states that outdoor spread is below 1%, may even be as low as .1%. In conclusion, I sincerely hope that we don't keep masks in place through the end of the school year out of an abundance of caution. We must use the information available to us to make informed decisions, and it is clear that we are ready to take this step forward. Please make masks optional at reset. Thank you. Have a great night.
Thank you. Our next caller, Caitlin Giambalvo, 8783.
Hello, can you hear me?
I can. Please just state your name and address for the record.
Okay, this is Caitlin Giambalvo, I live at 47 Geneva Terrace in Fairfield.
You can give your public comment. You have two minutes to give your comment.
Okay, thank you. Good evening. I have a daughter in Fairfield Public Schools, as well as two younger children, and I'm calling tonight to ask for your plans and the mask mandate for children in schools. For over a year, we've heard the phrase, "Follow the science," and I invite you to do so with me. Prior to 2020, 14 randomized controlled trials, the gold standard, concluded that there was no significant reduction in influenza transmission with the use of face masks. SARS-CoV-2 is approximately the same size or smaller, and also spreads via both droplets and aerosols, as does influenza, which renders this research applicable. You may have also heard of the Danish mask study, which is the only randomized control trial done on high-quality surgical masks and this virus. This study found no statistically significant benefit as well. Keep in mind, these were done on surgical masks, not fabric ones, which are what most children are wearing today. There is absolutely no standards for fit, quality, and other factors, unlike the surgical masks used in the aforementioned studies. Children are sneezing in them, touching those faces, wearing them in the bathroom where fecal matter and other bacteria can settle on the mask where it fits for the rest of the day. Unlike professionals in healthcare settings, they are not changing them frequently during the day, and especially when they become damp, which renders them useless. Children are experiencing delays in learning to read, and speech issues have been exacerbated. It is unknown if there is long-term risk of small fiber inhalation, as these fiber masks are being washed and dried dozens of times, and at the very least, this practice could compromise any supposed efficacy. Psychologically, children are being conditioned to think of themselves as perpetually ill and a danger to others. This is akin to misophobia, a pathological fear of contamination and germs, or hypochondria, a condition in which one is unusually worried about having a serious illness. Whereas adults can learn to cope with what's happening right now, our children are less likely to be able to do so. Children have attended school in Sweden, the Netherlands, many other countries this past year without wearing masks, as they are listening to the science that children rarely transmit the disease, and as is not a spread, has not been proven to be a major issue. The UK also--
Ms. Giambalvo, I'm sorry, I'm sorry to cut you off, but you've reached your two minutes. I'm sorry, we have a two limit, limit per caller. But thank you for calling in and for sharing your thoughts on this issue. You can also email us at the public comment email address if you have additional comments to make on this. Thank you. Is Ms. Messina back on the line? She was one of our callers that wasn't on earlier?
She is not.
Okay. For anyone who is listening and would like to give public comment, just a reminder, you can email the board at publiccomment@fairfieldschools.org, or submit your public comment on the form that is posted with the board meeting agenda on the Fairfield Public Schools website. So moving on, recognition of excellence. Nice to have some good news to share. The Connecticut PTA, every year holds a awards recognition ceremony that recognizes outstanding teachers and administrators. And this year, I am pleased to share with the board and the community that two of our educators have been honored. Mr. Paul Covanna was named the PTA High School Principal of the Year, and Ms. Jen Rossiopoe is the High School Teacher of the Year. Both were recognized on an award ceremony last week. Parents were very complimentary of both of these educators. They were honored for their ability to really connect home and school. The PTA, this award ceremony really fulfills the missions of the Connecticut PTA, whose goal is to strengthen the relationship between home and school. I think that those who have children at Ward can speak to Mr. Covanna's Sunday night phone calls, TikTok dances, and really just going above and beyond to, to connect with students on a personal level. The same can be said about Ms. Rossiopoe, really just urges her students to, to think outside the box, and asks them for their ideas and things that excite them. And if they, if they want to explore something, well, she says, "Show me how to do it," and engages them. She's also very active with extracurricular activities, including the Red Cross Club, and really just likes to connect with them on a very personal level. So I just would like to congratulate them. I wish they were here with us in person, so we could deliver this praise and thanks in person. But if you're listening, thank you for your service toward, and thank you to your service to our community. It was wonderful to see you recognized. Thank you. Moving on to all-state music honorees. We have a very long list of very fine musicians, which Mr. Cummings is going to read off and share with us.
Good evening, everyone. Mike Cummings, Superintendent. Before I do, I just want to echo Ms. Vitale's praise of Ms. Rossiopoe and Mr. Covanna, just two stellar examples of the staff that work in the Fairfield Public Schools, and knowing each of them for a while now, I, they're inspirational in their work. They're just, they're just really solid educators and great people. So I congratulate both of them. I'm going to read a number of names for music recognition, and I'm going to apologize in advance if I make a mistake on anybody's name I've been practicing, but that is not a guarantee of success. So first off, this is All-State Choir. Grace Camara, Sylvie Semino, Brennan Clark, Kyle Geriak, Ella Magnuson, Anna Morin, Krish Perini, Katie Seklary, Gavin Schlinghide, Samantha Ranzouli, Natalie Steele, Sam Peterson, Nick Peterson, and Paige Sokol. That's All-State Choir. All-State Orchestra, Christina Yuan, Armand Ajumo, Jalkot Mark, Freya Nangle, Michael Siegel, Sneha Sundar, and Gian Lorenzo Dupatis. That's again, All-State Orchestra. All-State Band, Ryan Chan, Grace Coin, Sophia Graney, Aaron Plejzer-Kranowitz, Owen Daly, Yegor Noskov, Henry Friedman, and Sammy Omasch. All-State Band. And then all eastern musicians. Megan Chowdhury, Gian Lorenzo Dupatis, Jenny Moore, Henry Friedman, Paige Sokol, Freya Nangle, Sophia Nangle. And all nationals musicians, Sylvie Semino. So again, congratulations to all of you. I should add, the last name I said, Sylvie, was recognized for choir. I'm going to make that clear. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cummings. And congratulations, Mr. Peterson, on your son's recognition. Moving on to third quarter financial report. Mrs. Munzel?
Doreen Munzel, Executive Director of Finance and Business Services. Better? Okay. The headline for this third quarter report is that we're no longer in a deficit situation. That's, thank you. Is that better? There you go.
Yes.
Okay, so we're no longer in a deficit situation as of the third quarter report. If you remember, the second quarter report, we were projecting a deficit of about 1.4 million. We implemented a hiring freeze and restricted purchases. Updated the projection again as of February 28th, and at that point, the deficit was projected to be 500,000. We knew, though, that there were many funds that were not incorporated into that projection, so we were confident that we would be able to balance the budget at the end of the year, and, and we have done that so far. We did not release funds for expenditures at that point. So it was March 31st is the third quarter report, but because of the timing of the report in, being delivered in May, we used the best available information at the time. So we have, this is based on actual and encumbered expenses as of May 4th, and then projected it to the, to June 30th from there. We have, because of this, we have released equipment funds, allowed the schools to make their equipment purchases. If you remember, last year, we were in the pandemic, we were all home, they weren't able to assess their needs and make those kind of orders. So it's been really two years where they haven't been able to buy equipment. We've also released general fund, general supply funds, and some instructional resources, and funding for instructional resources, and you'll see that in the report. So what I'll go over is Attachment 3.2, which are the projected balances. We have the first, well, labeled column two is the budget. Column three is the projection as of February 28th. Column four is the latest projection, the third quarter, which report as of 5/4. And then column five is the variance between the February projection and this quarter. So you'll see personnel services projected to be a negative 130. As tip, you know, we see typically salaries will fluctuate because of leave of absences and, and turnover. So there was a change there, a positive change of 106,000, kind of, you know, associated with that are additional substitute costs. So that balance decreased by 166. We have some savings in degree changes. Now that we're at the end of the year, the 170 for, is mostly for, the variance of 170 is mostly for extracurricular stipends that were not used. And then you'll notice on line 10, in February, we included the variance for RLA down below, but for this report, we moved it up. So if you include the 297 up there in February, the variance is really only about 15,000. Fixed charges, largest savings there is in the benefits, and that's because of the positions that were frozen, the hiring freeze. The next category of pupil personnel services, projected to be in a deficit of about 1.7, a swing of 360,000, which has gotten worse. That's typical this time of year. It may be an atypical year because of the pandemic, but this is a typical situation for pupil personnel. The biggest changes are in professional expenses and tuition, I believe. School balances, if you go down to school expenses, we're projecting a balance of 200,000. This is after releasing the funds for the schools to be able to purchase their, restock their needs. And then some savings in, additional savings in copying. Moving down to support. I hate to do this, but I've got to ask you to talk loud. The mic's having trouble. Is it, is this better? Support, support expenses. Updated professional growth in HR accounts, had some additional savings. There were some savings because the NEASK report for Ward with the pandemic was more virtual, so there were savings there. We're projecting 74,000 savings in legal services. There's some, you know, changes in software, additional savings in postage, and reduced copying. Also in medical supplies, we were well-stocked and didn't have to repurchase any of the, of those items. Instructional services, this is where we would have had a balance, an overall balance in these accounts of about 300, almost 370,000. But when we realized that--
Doreen, can I just stop you for one second? I'm going to bring you this mic and see if this works. The public is getting no audio from that mic, so just bear with us for one second.
Okay. Better? There you go. We're on instructional services, line 32. This is where we were, we would have had an overall balance of about 370,000 because of the budget freeze. And when we, when we realized that the, you know, we were no longer in a deficit situation, we released, released some of those funds so that we can get the resources that we needed. There were some world language textbooks that were purchased, and we're going to use about 50,000 for curriculum writing. So that left us a balance of about 385 in support expenses. Moving down to maintenance, that includes technology, some technology items. There was a swing in technology, equipment maintenance, system and equipment maintenance. Tech training, we did use some of that. We are taking another update from UNIS, our financial software, and that's going in on July 9th, so we had to do some training, so that's why that balance came down. Transportation, that's over 177,000 approximately. There was an increase in pre-K tuition, a pre-K transportation hours. We had some costs-- We had some cost, we had some cost for Wakeman buses and the disinfecting, not taking the discount, the prepayment discount. So that's why we were having a deficit there. Vocational, we were able to save, eliminate one hourly bus, so that changed by 24,000. I'm just going to go over the major changes. Heat, now that, we hope the heating season is over, we think that changed by about 148,000 due to lower distribution rates. So that gives us a balance of 1.7 million. And then capital, special ed, is their increase, their balance increased to 50,000, projected balance based on need, which brings us to a total general fund balance of about 986. Then we get into COVID. The instructional, the line that was instructional, I know this gets me every time, and I know when we've talked about it, the finance committee, that's the tent. And it really should be a maintenance, but there's an additional tent, two tents, I think, for the proms. So that's, that's what that additional expense was, brought that balance down. Maintenance, operations, and security, that's mostly PPE. There is a huge swing there. The projected balance was 2.3 before, and it went down to 1.6. I think mostly because of, you know, maintenance department trying to estimate throughout the year, the usage on all that PPE, I think was much better than they anticipated. That brings us down to COVID account, total of projected balance of 611 deficit. The non-lapsing accounts, which were the maintenance accounts that were moved from the Board of A Budget, projected savings of 218,000 for an overall deficit of about 293 in non-lapsing. That brings us down to a total between general fund and non-lapsing of a balance of 593. Now, if you go down further, that negative, the reduction of the balance for food service, the reason why that's there is because the food service program is not doing well financially because of the pandemic. Last year, we lost about 112,000, and this year, we're projected to lose about 180,000. So overall, for the two years, 291,000 loss, almost 300,000 is not a good situation. The ending, the projected ending cash balance at the end of this year is a negative 120. So, you know, we've got to do something to subsidize that program, which is why I put the 200,000, I think that would be a minimum. And that brings us down to the balance at 393. I'll take questions so I can take a breath.
Does anybody have any questions for Mrs. Munsell? Mrs. Maxicanelli?
A couple of quick questions. First of all, on line 32, I was wondering if you could speak to what that curriculum writing was? Is that pertinent to this summer, or is that for a future approval item?
I'm sorry.
On line 32, the reference to curriculum writing?
What, what is it in reference to?
Like, is that part of our cycle, or is that something specific to the summer work?
It's part of the cycle, I believe, that hasn't been able to be done all year.
Good evening. James Evedensik, Executive Director of Curriculum Instruction and Assessment. Much of that curriculum writing was budgeted last year for various things, updates to implementation guides, updates to some documents for assessments, and each department budgeted that. It was obviously frozen, and then when we went back out, we said, what do you actually need and can get done within the next two months before July 1st? And it was about $50,000.
So at this point, are we back on track for that?
For the review or for the miscellaneous curriculum items?
Any?
So yes, I think you're aware, much, some of the reviews went back a year out, and those are obviously still on track and in the next budget for the most part. The departments are getting back on track in terms of what they have to do. There is some curriculum dollars that were unspent as a result of no time to get the work done in this year.
Okay. All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
And then to Ms. Munsell, on line 36, the security audit. I know that's something Mrs. Jacobson's asked about in the past, and as have we all. And so I was wondering, what, what does this mean in terms of the status of that?
Good evening. Zakiya Paris, Executive Director of Operations and Processes. So the security audit is not included in that savings. The security audit, actually, they had 24 submissions for the security audit, and they're working now to secure the awarded bid. So the bid that came in was just under $50,000. The exact amount was 49,848. So they're working to basically secure that bid and get everything put together so that they can move forward with the audit. So the security audit is moving forward. It is not included in that savings, as a savings.
Okay, so that's the key, the being that it's going forward.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
And then, Ms. Munsell, when you say that the food service number has to be addressed, I guess I would have assumed that this was a blip related to COVID as opposed to something that involves a, you know, significant look of the district. Are you not seeing it that way, that you're seeing that there's another issue?
No, it's definitely related to the pandemic.
So when you say that this is something that will have to be addressed, you're simply meaning we're going to have to devote more money to it? You're not talking about a structural change? You're not talking about a change in contract or anything like that?
No, we can't, we can't allow them to have a negative cash balance.
Right. Okay, thank you.
Ms. Jacobson, filed by Ms. Pickle.
Hi, thank you, Ms. Munsell, for the report. I just have a couple of quick questions. Line 22, the school balances of $200,000, is that after all requests that had been put in are fulfilled and anything that had been previously rejected allowed?
Yes.
So nobody's been told no for anything at this point?
Well, I wouldn't say that, but nobody's been, refused a reasonable request.
Okay, that sounds interesting. Is the unreasonable request so unreasonable that it can't be utilized?
No, no, I'm just, I'm just-
Thank you for that. The, in line 17, can you just break down that professional expenses, 761, a little bit in terms of what that, what is made up of that number? Is that legal or? No? Okay.
Good evening. Rob Mancusi, Executive Director of Special Education-
Am I on? Yeah. Good evening, everybody. Rob Mancusi, Executive Director of Special Education and Special Programs. That professional expense account, that includes our OT, our PT, our consultations with, with our programs, our unique in-district programs and staff. It also includes our contracted speech to cover hours that our current FTE can't cover as well as any outside evaluations.
Just stay, stay with there, I have another question. I don't know if you have this answer for me now, but I mean, the, on the tuition line, I know that, I don't know who the right person is to ask this question, but, you know, we budgeted a certain amount for that. We knew during budget season that it had gone up to over 7 million. What is your estimate based on all the different documents that you have so far for the end of year number for that? Is it going to be what was in the budget book?
I'm going to have to get that too.
Okay. All right, thank you. Okay, next is Mr. Papa George. Line 41, the 572-732 balance. Mr. Papa George, those, the items in the comment section, besides the ones that are in parentheses, are those things that have not been done, and that's why there is the balance there? Not utilized, shall we say?
That is correct. We have not done those items.
Okay. Can I just ask you about the painting really quickly? I know that we had put in $100,000 in total this year for painting, and then through the budget season, our estimated in that line was $50,000. But this is saying that we're not using any of the $100,000?
We did not use any of it as of yet. We froze the painting account this year because of the possible deficit.
And then the other, the projects at Ward and at Ludlow, those remain frozen? I'm assuming the answer is yes. I'm just looking to see whether or not you think that we're going to be able to do them. It's in the same line, 41.
Sorry, I didn't bring my glasses with me, but I'm, from what I see, this is the Ward, the Ludlow High School second floor concession stand, and we are moving forwards with that at this point. We've got it out for design, so we're working on that one.
Ward, the one at Ward?
I'm sorry, I'm trying to see what Ward is.
What is the desk collector?
Oh, the desk collector. We, we are not doing that project moving forwards at this point. We actually were able to work with the manufacturer of the product, and we had one of our technicians work with them, and we were able to order some parts, and we have them in and installed. And at this point, we believe it's going to work, so we don't see a need to replace at this time.
Okay. When, do you think by the, you know, our next meeting or so, you would have a better idea of the status of that operational and just what the longevity? I assume we put it in the budget for a reason, and, you know, is this a short-term fix, or?
So we did put it in the budget because we worked with the, we worked with an authorized dealer, and they came out and looked at it and told us that it was non-reparable at that time. Working directly with the manufacturer is how we were able to purchase the parts. Once they realized that we had certified technicians on staff, they were able to work with us directly and cut out the authorized dealer. So once, again, it's been up and running since the April break was when we made the repairs. We want to give it some time to make sure that it is doing what it's supposed to be doing.
Okay. Can we, I just, I don't know, if we just keep, I assume at the next meeting, we'll have, will you be able to give just an idea of if it is actually working?
I can absolutely.
Okay, thank you. Things like the preventative maintenance, equipment integration, preventative maintenance, all of the prevent, what are those items and why are we not doing them, or why are they in this area?
So the preventive, controls preventative maintenance are the integrated preventative maintenance. We are still working with the town to get the RFPs submitted, they are submitted, so reviewed and signed off on. We, we're holding it at this point because we believe that by the time we get through the process and have the contractors onboard, it will, will hit July 1st, so it'll be a new year, rather than trying to get them to squeeze something in right at the end of the year.
So that would become part of 21, 22, I mean?
Correct, we budgeted for it.
Oh, you did? Okay, so it's in there already?
Yes, we have, we had the numbers from the vendors, so we were able to budget for it.
Okay, great. All right, thank you. Sorry. I think that's it. Thank you.
Ms. Pickle?
Mrs. Jacobson actually asked a couple of mine, so I have one. Line 28, tech software. If you could just help me clarify, what's, it says did not renew Marikai license? What's that?
It's Mariki license, I think it is, but I have no idea.
I believe that these are licenses with respect to some of the providing families with access to internet, and so because there were other alternatives, that, I believe that's what this is, but I would have to look a little bit further to find out.
I just never heard that word before when it comes to tech, so that's why I asked.
Yeah, it's a brand, so I would have to look further into it. I believe that's what it is, but I might be confusing it with the Kajits.
Okay, thank you. You're welcome.
Mr. Peterson?
I have a quick question for Mr. Papa George. I'm sorry, I just noticed this when Ms. Jacobson was, was talking. Line 41, there is a negative balance in there for snow removal of $91,000. My recollection, and correct me if I'm wrong, I thought we had frozen this months ago when we were in deficit situation, when we had a positive balance left in that account. Why, since there's been no snow since then, why is this a negative number now?
I'm actually going to have to look into that and find out for you.
Is my recollection correct that we had a positive balance and we froze it?
I don't remember a positive balance. I know we've, I know everything out of that account directly goes to snow removal. It may have been bills that were slow in processing, and that's why they weren't showing up at the last one. Our, our snow contractor usually runs 30 to 60 days behind on billing for some reason.
All right, yeah, if you could look into that, because I just, I, Mr. Cummings, am I, am I mistaken about that?
No, you are correct.
That was a mitigation measure that we took?
Yes, and we had a conversation about hopefully no more snow. I remember this, yes.
Okay, all right. If that could be clarified, that would, that'd be helpful.
Ms. Jacobson?
One last question, probably from Mr. Mancusi. The additional tuition line, sorry to make this up, I'm looking at the excess cost grant. Does any of that come with additional excess cost revenue, or is that straight tuition that we won't, or that is non-reimbursable?
We projected 3.5 million in excess cost, and that's what we're going to end up getting.
So no additional, then?
So I think, I know transportation costs came down significantly because there were a lot of outplaced, you know, out-of-district transportation situations that didn't happen. But I, so I believe that there are other situations where there was tuition that kind of offset it. But we're right on target for excess cost.
No, I know, I noticed that on the grant page, that it was the same, but we've had a significant increase in tuition, so I was wondering if any of that increase came with additional excess cost? Or is that just straight additional tuition because they're not high, they don't meet the 4 to 0.5 threshold?
The difference is we got almost 80% back in excess cost reimbursement. That's how we made up that, that amount that we had previously projected there'd be a deficit. But there was an increase in tuitions. Some of it was reimbursable through the excess cost grant, some of it was not because it did not meet the threshold.
Okay, thanks so much. Any other questions? Mr. Asa?
So going down to line 63, back to the food services. Ms. Munsell, can you tell us what the allowable carryover is in a year? I know you said that we had a cash balance, and we've depleted that. Could you just elaborate? Because I understand that we want to put 200,000 in there, which would really only give us an $80,000 buffer, where it sounds like we had a few hundred thousand before.
Because it's a federally subsidized program, you can't carry any more than three months of expenses. So it would be about 800,000 would be the cap on the, the amount of cash that they would be able to carry. So somewhere between, you know, zero and the 800,000 is where we want to be.
So to be clear, when you said- So, to be clear, when you said at a minimum, that it would, it would be most likely fiscally responsible, if able, to put slightly more in there to bring us obviously more than eighty thousand in reserves?
Yes, it would be.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have.
Any other questions? I have just one for Mr. Papa George, is there anything that was maintenance that has come up over the last couple of months that was not included in the budget that we should know about?
We've had some minor repairs come up over the last couple of months, we had one today that we're still investigating to find out what the total cost is going to be for the repair, nothing large that jumps out at me.
Okay, thank you, Mrs. Maxicanelli?
I just quick follow-up on that, how are the tents holding up?
The tents are holding up well, the, we have not had to use our contractor to do a follow-up, we do have a contractor on standby now, so if we have any significant storms or winds, they will come out and investigate them to make sure that they are still standing and sturdy.
And the, are the tents up at all the schools now? I know that one of them, wasn't Roger Ludlow down still, or is that up now?
The Roger Ludlow tent is still down at this time.
Mr. Asa?
So, while you're up there, can you just explain that we have a contractor on standby now for the tents? Not our own personnel?
That is correct, so we are, we are now contracting with a local tent company to put up, take down the tents, and to inspect them when need be.
And, and the reason for that?
It was determined by risk management for the town that we do not have certified tent staff on our staff or on the town DPW side.
And is there a certification process?
Reaching out to the manufacturer of the tent, they said they could send some literature out, but that really the certification, there's no certificate, it's just a matter of knowledge and experience, our local tent vendor has been doing it for quite some years.
So, to be clear, these additional expenditures around the tents that we purchased are not by choice of our own, they're to follow procedure set out by risk management for the town of Fairfield?
That is correct, originally when purchasing the tents, the intent was that the Board of Ed staff and the DPW staff would work together to put up the tents and remove the tents at the end of the season.
And do we know how much we've spent with these outside contractors since we can't work with them?
I don't have it with me right now, I can get that information for you.
Okay, I, I would be interested in that, because I know there was, you know, savings buying versus renting, but I'm curious if those savings are going to be eaten up now because we're not allowed to manage the tents ourselves?
I can get the numbers to you.
Okay, thank you, and while you're up here, Mr. Papa George, I have one more question, just for clarification, under electric, forty-five and forty-six, electric and commercial gas heat, do you attribute these savings to less rentals of buildings and less after-hours versus something that we should be anticipating these types of savings in the future, or do you think we'll go back to normal once we start using the buildings more?
No, I believe we will go back to normal, we have not used the buildings on weekends after-hours, even our evening custodial staff has been leaving prior to eleven because we have their hours shifted to start earlier, so the buildings are closing down earlier at night.
Okay, thank you, so, so for what we've budgeted is what I'm getting at for next year, we should be on the mark, even though we're showing a surplus this year?
Correct.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Before moving on, Mr. Cummings, do you have any comments to make about?
Follow-up on Mr. Asa's question around the contracting to work with the tents, Mr. Papa George, or Mr. Asa asked about the, maybe it was you, Miss Vitale, I apologize, the Roger Ludlow tent, and I'm wondering if, in your question, if we should also give you an estimate of the cost to repair that tent?
I would absolutely like all expenses related to the tents that we now own, because the way I look at it is, we're going to be expending these, these dollars towards these tents moving forward, and I'd just like to know how we should plan for it moving forward. I understand, and I'm hopeful, that next year, we don't need to be having tents up at every school, but I assume that now we own them, that we're going to want to use them, and I'm curious if these can become a revenue source added, if we put up a tent and we're renting a building or whatnot, or if the town can use it, or if they're just going to sit in storage now because we don't have personnel that can do it?
Absolutely, we can get the full numbers for you.
Can I, can I just throw, throw in there, cleaning expenses too are, are consideration, right?
Yes, so the company, when, when we have them removed, that's a flat fee, and when we have them reinstalled or put back up, that includes a washing of the canvas.
Thank you, sorry.
Mrs. Maxicanelli?
Sorry, one other tent question, is, the, I, I hadn't realized that, that the Roger Ludlow tent was not up yet, which obviously is impacting that school, is this attributable to cheaper equipment? Because obviously, ultimately, we bought these tents off the non-approved state list to get them more cheaply, and so I'm questioning the, the difference versus the state-approved list, is that the issue here, or is it something else?
The tents were purchased as used tents, so, and they were not purchased off the state bid list, but they were competitive priced.
Which doesn't quite answer my question, but I, I'm assuming that in being used, is that the source of their fragility?
I actually cannot speak to the fragility of the tents themselves, we have, we've had-
Say, you lack the certification, which is-
I'm lacking the certification, absolutely, and we've had multiple companies look at the tents, we did, just to note, we did buy the tents directly from the manufacturer of the tent, so we would like to think that it was in good shape when it was delivered to us and installed by the manufacturer of the tent, at this time, we're still working with them to see about repair, or is it a complete wash for the tent?
And no warranty?
No warranty on the tent.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Asa?
I'm sorry to drag this out, I promise this is the last, but after this year, can we sell these things? Can we, can we get rid of them if we're not going to need all of them? Can we recoup some of our expenses on this?
It's something we could look at, I'm, my, my thought, and it's only my thought, is that now that we've had tents at schools, I can't imagine the schools not looking for them in the future as a possible use or an outdoor space to be offered, other than that, we are actually in the process of working with the town right now for a surplus bid company for some of our other equipment and town equipment.
Okay, well, I'm, I'm happy to hear that, so thank you for pursuing that aspect with regards to other equipment.
Ms. Vitale? Just somewhat related to tents, Mrs., sorry, Mrs. Maxicanelli, go ahead.
Okay, I, now I have to follow-up on that, because my, my concern with working, and I enormously appreciate that the possibility of the efficiencies of working with the town, but not if we don't have any control over quality, and we got cheaper stuff, and it has broken, we've had tent pole snap, so what kind of controls are in place as we look forward to, and again, I enormously appreciate working with the town on many of these things and anticipate efficiencies because of it, but not at the expense of quality control, so with whatever it is that you just referenced, how much of quality control is a part of that, and how much can we still continue to operate independently?
I like to think the tents were a learning lesson for all when it comes to that, tents, I learned a lot about tents over the last year, and there's many different styles, types, and quality of tents, you know, there's single pole, double pole, double wall, there's wooden, I, yeah.
Turning this into a circus.
Yes, I, I mean, my, my final comment would be that we've, we've enjoyed working with the town, we would like to continue that process, it's been great to do, even something to note is, when we first opened schools and we swapped out all the paper tile dispensers in every bathroom in every building to a touchless system, three of our contract, three of our construction or carpenters from the BOE maintenance department, and three DPW carpenters worked together to get them swapped out in less than a week.
I appreciate that, I'm just worried about the quality control of new products, but thank you.
Any other questions? So, mentioned tent rental for prom, we're renting tents for prom, additional tents, or we, okay.
We're rent, we are renting one tent for the Ludlow High School prom, the Ward prom, we own that tent.
Okay. All right, and, thank you. Okay, moving on to the presentation of the superintendent's recommended two thousand twenty-one, two thousand twenty-two budget adjustments, as everybody knows, our proposed two thousand twenty-one, two thousand twenty-two budget was reduced by two million dollars as it made its way through the town budget process, so it comes back to us to adjust so we can present a balanced budget. As in years past, the superintendent will, has proposed some recommendation, recommended adjustments, it is however, up to the board to finally make those adjustments, so your comments, concerns, ideas are welcomed, and with that, I will give it to Mr. Cummings to talk us through it.
Thank you, Ms. Vitale, I'm, I'm gonna have, actually, Ms. Manzel come back up and, and work her way through the spreadsheet, I just want to preface first that, given the depth of the cut, a number of issues, a number of potential reductions were avoided because of several things that broke in our favor that we can go through and that she can highlight, and I also want to point out that we, we feel, as the executive directors worked on these cuts, and I also want to reach out and thank particularly Mr. Hatzis and Mr. Commander for their support in, in identifying some of the reductions, they did a lot of work to do, to, in, in making this work, but we feel comfortable and confident in the, in the cuts we, we are proposing, we also recognize, respect that the board may have some additional changes they want to make, and we look forward to hearing from you tonight, and then working over the next week or so to build a response for the May twenty-fifth meeting. So, Ms. Manzel, could you come up and just work your way, work our way through this?
Just, may I ask a question, Ms. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Asa?
So, just for clarification and a refresher, tonight, this is almost like a first read, correct, where we're going to be discussing our ideas, bringing forward at the table what we plan to potentially bring forward next meeting, correct? The voting and everything will take place next meeting, tonight is purely a discussion?
That is correct, Mr. Asa, tonight is just the superintendent making some recommended budget adjustments and an opportunity for a board member, excuse me, board members, if they have any other ideas to share them tonight, of course, if nobody has any ideas tonight, we have two weeks until our next meeting, which you can follow up with the superintendent, but this is the starting point, and the plan is to vote at our May twenty-fifth meeting. With that, Ms. Manzel, the floor is yours.
Okay, so we have, excuse me, two scenarios here, scenario one is adding twenty-six open choice students at the three thousand dollars, we already have seventy-four budgeted, so that will get us to the hundred, so the, the differential there is the twenty-six at three thousand or the seventy-eight thousand, so the additional revenue would allow us to move expenses from the Board of Ed budget into the open choice grant, and thereby reducing the budget. I think instead of going down the column, I'll, I'll go to scenario two, line two for open choice, that scenario just explains that the, this year's grant was based on the ten, one enrollment of seventy-four students, so an additional thirty-seven students, or half, would allow us to, would get us to one hundred and eleven students, but would also allow us to get to the six thousand per student rate as opposed to the three thousand, so the one hundred and eleven at six thousand is a six sixty-six, less the two twenty-two that's already in the budget, so the differential or adjustment for the budget would be the four forty-four. The way I balanced the cut with the difference between scenario one and scenario two was in the insurance line, which is line four, so on line four, under scenario one, we would cut the budget by eight forty-four to make up for the, the revenue that we wouldn't make, make up in open choice, under scenario two, because we would be getting the additional open choice revenue, that adjustment would only have to be for health insurance, four seventy-eight. Now, we know that based on preliminary calculations on the, on the final rates, that we have potential savings of a million dollars next year, but we're still in the process of open enrollment, and we won't know what those changes are until about another week from now. The other cut, line five is pension, that's the latest contribution that we, we're given by Hooker and Holcomb based on the final twenty-twenty evaluation report, so this is updated information since the budget was put together, that's consistent under both scenarios. Long-term disability in life were renegotiated rates by Aon, and those are consistent, so that gets us down to, line eight is benefit adjustments, a million dollar, a million eleven thousand under scenario one, and six hundred and forty-five thousand under scenario two. We had a win bid award with, say, does forty, which will save us forty-seven thousand, that was a recent award, which is also updated information, we put three hundred thousand of the COVID PPNA in the S R two grant, so we're able to take it out there. OTPT bid award savings, there's some projected savings from the pounding bid award of three hundred thousand, high school certified staff, there's three FTEs there for three hundred thousand in both scenarios, it's one point eight FTE at Ludlow, and one point two at Ward, all of them, other than, everything other than a two point two reduction was for, through attrition, there's a central office secretary for sixty-four thousand under both scenarios, and here, we are adding back a hundred thousand for special ed evaluation, initially, it was special ed evaluation and consultation, but I meant to take the consultation piece off, I would just put that hundred thousand in the evaluation account, so that gets us down to other adjustments of nine eleven, and under both scenarios, the two million dollar cut.
Ms. Asa, you're joined up? Yep, go.
Can you hear me okay? All right. So, first off, thank you to Mr. Cummings and his staff, especially, I'm looking at lines twelve and thirteen, and the idea of this is really the, the core to me of the structural change discussion that we had, and the fact that we're doing these reductions without anybody being laid off and put out on the street is very good to me, and, and I appreciate that, I appreciate the principals at the high schools looking to areas where we could make these reductions for added savings of three FTEs, and where we can eliminate a central office secretary and not have to eliminate an actual person's livelihood, so I think this is very promising, and I think it's a first step towards more work that we, we will talk about, you know, down the road. With regard to the two different scenarios and the health insurance, I, I do want to bring up the fact that in scenario one, you know, we're, we're looking for almost twice the amount of savings, but it's not apples to apples, and I, I feel that if you're showing eight hundred and forty-four thousand in health savings in scenario one, that same health savings is available in scenario two, so I want to point that out, and if it's okay, Madam Chair, may I open the discussion on the first line with regard to revenue from open choice?
Before we go down that road, I just want to see if there's any broader overall questions about the adjustments, and then we can take that tact just- about the adjustments, and then we can take that tact, just to make sure that members have an overall understanding, get some initial questions asked, and then we can go that way. Ms. Guernsey?
Yes, I just have a quick question about the number 12, the high school certified staff. And I'm wondering if we could just have some more detail on the 0.2 reduction? What kinds of impact that's making on the classes? What kind of classes we're talking about, even through attrition? How this is changing or impacting our high schools? Thank you.
I can answer that. Thank you, Ms. Guernsey. What we did when we got the high school staffing grids, the initial high school staffing grids, Dr. Parrish and I went through those. We went through the average class sizes. We identified a number of areas where we thought that staffing, the class sizes could actually increase to a comfortable level and still meet board requirements, board expectations without impacting instruction. We then met with the high school principals. I gave them a sense of what I saw from each school was possible. But I said to them, I essentially turned it back over to them and said, this is a number that I'm looking for. I'm counting on you to work with the staff to identify the best places to make these cuts. I've given you some suggestions, but you know your buildings better than I do. Where would be the best place to make these cuts? So we met with them about a week or so later, a week and a half later. Not everything that we suggested, they picked, but they again, being conscious of their staff, conscious of their needs, conscious of changes they want to make as people retire and who might be taking on new courses, all the things that go into building a high school schedule and the staffing formula, they took that into account. I will tell you that the 0.2 reduction is justified. It's in an area that enrollment is low, has been low. I think an effort was made to try to build that up, but it's not been successful. And so we feel that that's an understandable reduction. And rather than make a corresponding cut in another area, enrollment really determined a lot of the changes that the principals made.
So I guess just as a follow-up, I don't know if you can share what area that's in, but I guess what I'm thinking about, the question that I'm wondering is, are, I mean, you're talking about making class sizes larger or collapsing them in that way. But are there any courses that will be discontinued? Does this impact the availability of courses?
No, it doesn't. There's, there's no, and I want to be, there's no class sizes changes. I would say some comfortable class sizes are going to still be comfortable. I don't think, we didn't see anything that, that made us concerned about an impact on the instruction. The area that this was in, the 0.2 was in oral language section.
Thank you. Any other questions? Ms. Jacobson?
I'll just stay on that subject really quickly. Can you help me understand the, better the term comfortable?
Class sizes, yes, nothing changed. To give you an example, if, you know, when you do this type of work, when you look at high school class sizes, there's two major areas you look at. You look at the, where you start. You look at the core instructional areas, and you tend to look at the core classes. The classes that every ninth, 10th, and 11th grader may take. And you look at the number of sections in each of those. So if 300 kids are taking freshman English, say, that's an exaggeration of any one level, and how many teachers are assigned to that, or how many sections, excuse me, are assigned to that? What is the class average? In those areas, not always, but you can often say, okay, if we reduce one full-year course here, the class sections, and given the number of kids in the number of sections, the class average size goes from 19 to 20.5 or something like that. And that's the type of work that we did, essentially looking at those areas. I mean, Dr. Parrish and I have both done this work as high school principals. So in the core areas, you know, English, math, science, social studies, and oral language, that's how you approach it. In the more elective areas, you look to say, I think you take a lighter hand to those areas, because as kids matriculate up through the course areas, you're going to have to support smaller sections in order for kids to complete the course of study. But where you look for is, can these courses possibly be nested together? So to give you an example, and this is not the appropriate terminology, but could a CAD III class go with a CAD IV class? And those are the types of things you start to look like, to look at when you work with a high school schedule like that. So those are the two primary ways you approach this. And it was, it was not easy. I mean, I, again, that's why I'm calling out the work that Mr. Hatsis and Mr. Cavanna did, because there's a lot, the size of our high schools, there's a lot of moving pieces. And to Mr. Ace's point, to go through this carefully, account for where retirements are, account for where staff is going to move into those positions. If you're losing a calculus teacher, who's going to take those sections on? These are all things that went into play as they made these decisions.
Okay, thank you for the explanation. I have another one. Is that, okay? Speaking to the variance in the health insurance, was there some part of a thought process in scenario two of what that $366,000 variance was going to go towards?
An area I would recommend is to add more than 100,000 to the evaluations.
Okay, so now I'm getting to the evaluations. Can you just give us some more color on, this is obviously something that's already in our budget, but you're foreseeing a need for more than what we budgeted for, or was that was passed?
Yeah, Mr. Mancusi?
Hi, everybody. Again, Rob Mancusi, Executive Director of Special Education. We are being challenged this year with, with students with disabilities and the impact that the pandemic has had on their learning. So we're doing a lot more literacy evaluations, math evaluations, and we're even doing a lot more psychiatric evaluations. So that's where this, this addition came in, in anticipation that we're still going to be challenged for the 21, 22 school year.
Before you go away, I think it'd be important for us to have an idea before we have a deeper conversation here this evening on exact, I mean, obviously you can't know the exact amount, and you don't have a crystal ball. But how worried are you in terms of a rough estimate of how much more you think you might need than just this $100,000 based on Mrs. Mansal's comment?
Well, depending on the type of evaluation and depending on the evaluator, and you know, if parents disagree with the district's evaluations, they have the right at public expense to request an independent educational evaluation. And as you know, if we deny that request, then we have to immediately file for due process, and we've talked about that. So one evaluation could be $10,000, depending on the scope of the evaluation. Generally, our evaluations range from 2,500 to $10,000, depending on what type of evaluation. So $100,000 would cover several evaluations. Depending on the type would depend on how many evaluations that would cover.
Thank you. I'm just trying to get our arms around a little bit about what would make you feel more comfortable. Like, I'm not saying that that's going to happen. I just would like to have an idea of how short you think we are.
When we build the budget, we do the best we can in terms of looking at the number of outside of evaluations we've had over, you know, a two or three-year period. This year definitely more, and you know, we're anticipating that it's, it's going to continue into next year. So, you know, $100,000, we're thrilled to be able to add that to, you know, to have that as a buffer. But again, you know, depending on the type of evaluation we do, depending on the needs of the individual child, will drive the cost.
Ms. Pickoff, follow up on that? Ms. Pickoff?
I don't know if this goes to Mrs. Mansal or Mr. Cummings. Is this an item that we can use under the federal funds?
Which item?
Literacy evaluations.
You could, you could do a number of things under the federal funds. I would not necessarily recommend this. I mean, the, well, I'm going to talk a little bit about the new grant, but its intent is really to be transformative. They want the money to be transformative in its spending, so.
Okay, so that goes back to the question of, you put this in the budget anticipating that there may be, because of learning loss, or parents advocating for their child to have a literacy evaluation, a little hesitant to take it out. Did you anticipate using this $100,000?
This is, we're adding to what we already put in the budget.
And is this based on just how things are going now that kids are back in school and what you're seeing for current conversations with parents that you foresee this, an increased need that you are seeing now that you didn't necessarily see back in November, October?
Yes.
Ms. Rotelli?
Hi. Is that 100,000 just for literacy evals? Because in the notes, it says additional funding for literacy eval, but in the description, it's additional sped evaluation. So is this going beyond just the literacy evals and into some of the other?
It's primarily meant for the literacy evaluations, but also.
But you're seeing an uptick in all different types of evaluations?
Psychiatric evaluations, literacy evaluations.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Jacobson, do you have other questions? Okay. Ms. Max Canelli?
Okay, thank you. First of all, just as a, as a public document, I would hope that that line was very specific, that if it's literacy evaluations and whatever type it is, I do think it's important that the public sees that so they realize what we are grappling with as a district, just as a suggestion. Backing up, and I'm sorry if I'm the only one who is not understanding this. I don't understand that health insurance number. A savings is a savings. I don't understand why there is such a stark contrast in these two numbers and why that's, why that's dependent on scenario one or scenario two. Aren't we, aren't the experts, aren't the professionals telling us that we have changed our numbers from what we had estimated back in December, which we had approved in January? There has been a recalculation based on experience. Isn't there a single number? I don't understand the two scenarios.
Okay, yes, the projected savings based on the final rates was a million dollars. The caveat is we're still on open enrollment, and we don't know what actual enrollment's going to be. The only reason why the health insurance numbers are different is because it was the easiest way to balance to the, the $2 million cut with the two scenarios with the open choice revenue, without adding additional cuts to one scenario that wouldn't be in the other scenario.
And which, that's what I was wondering, because, I mean, and I know this would make this document more challenging and would push the bottom of the page. I don't know. It just makes sense to me that there's a single number there, which is what our best, you know, forecast is for that health insurance number, and since that would lean towards the larger, obviously, I don't know where the open choice discussion is going to go, so that's a secondary factor. I acknowledge that. But hypothetically speaking, if we ended with scenario two, yet we knew we were going to have, I'll say, $900,000 in savings, that would mean in effect that there is a pool of money, and I have to believe that when it comes to our sped money, because we were $1.7 million short this year, and that was with significant transportation savings, that there is a whole other budget line that we might really, that we should be considering as an add to the budget. And because I'm just not comfortable with the, and I definitely understand that as a, you know, mathematical reckoning thing, that having these, it in the health insurance number maybe makes sense, but it's just not logical, at least not to me.
Ms. Pickoff, follow up?
I have to say that I too was very confused by this section, because at least in the time that I've been on the board, at the end of the year, there's always been some kind of projected savings. But this is just very unclear to me. I mean, we're not 100% sure about these numbers? Is, is this a surplus at the end? I'm so confused on what's going on here.
And I'm, I'm clear on the surplus. I just think this number has to be consistent, and we have to reflect the open choice decision in a different manner. But regardless, it needs to be explained. I have other questions. I just wanted to give Mr. Cummings a chance on that.
Well, no, Mr. Ace's hand was up, so I was going to.
Follow up, Ms. Stresa.
I think it's very clear that this $366,000 that Mrs. Jacobson referenced earlier, in scenario two, we actually wind up with more money than we budgeted for and what the board passed as a budget, which went to the Board of Selectmen, the Board of Finance, and the RTM. So in essence, when you put the apples-to-apples insurance number, let's use close to 900,000, because I do think we should keep a slight buffer in there for enrollment. Scenario two puts us with more money than we asked for in the beginning. And for that, I will put it out there that I have a fundamental problem with that.
But, but hold on, and I understand that. And to me then, if we pursued scenario two, we're either looking at, okay, let's have a more realistic examination of our budget, and I'd mentioned sped, or crazy thought, well, I guess we can't reduce the budget more. But I mean, that's really what we're in the position of. Regardless though, line four should be consistent, is ultimately my point.
And I think that as we have this conversation, I see that number changing. We discussed in the finance committee for the purpose of this discussion, for the, to put in the health insurance item for the reason Ms. Mansal stated. Just based on, if the board remembers from two years ago, we ended up having a 600,000 roughly deficit in the health insurance line item halfway through the year, based on a change in enrollment. So I would, Ms. Mansal, I don't know if you're going to have more accurate numbers on this before we vote?
Yep.
So that number could change again, I think, as we get more, a firmer number once enrollment is completed. But for a first dab, just as a means of keeping everything else somewhat consistent, it was put in the health insurance line item. To Mr. Ace's point, I, I think that you could decide where the cut comes from. You know, if you increase the revenue for open choice, you possibly wouldn't need to make some of the other cuts that are listed below. I think that that's a discussion that we will have in terms of where we want to make these adjustments. So when, if we don't have any, Ms. Rotelli?
Thank you.
I wasn't done, but if Mrs. Rotelli has a follow-up, I'm fine with waiting.
Follow up?
Thank you. I agree. I think the line should be consistent. I don't understand the variance in the two scenarios. But, so can you just tell us when open enrollment is over? And, you know, how fast from the close of open enrollment, would you have a firm number?
It actually just closed, but we're tracking down those people that didn't meet the deadline.
Closed as of when? You know the date?
The fifth, the sixth.
The sixth of, of May?
I think it's the sixth, yep.
Any other questions, Ms. Rotelli? Mrs. Max Canelli?
And actually, Ms. Vitale, I do thank you for reminding me about that previous deficit. So can, just as a reminder, obviously based on this open enrollment, we'll arrive at a number. What could impact that next year, so that it was not accurate and insufficient?
Staffing changes, if the, if just the population of people that are enrolled changes. And correct me if I'm wrong, Ms. Mansal, I will let you answer this. But, you know, right now, we have a teacher, if that teacher retires and somebody else comes in, that could just change.
So new hires and change of life circumstances?
Correct.
Okay. All right, that makes a little bit more sense to me in terms of, and again, thank you for reminding me about the past deficit, that there is a certain degree of volatility to this.
Children now, you know, going under parents' health insurance, just, that's what, stuff like that, that affected in the past.
Okay. Few other questions, and I know I've seen it before, but line nine- Few other questions, and I, I know I've seen it before, but line nine, what is that again?
It's a wide area network bid. We were due to go out to bid, which we did.
But what is that?
Technology.
I, I would have to get back to you on the details of what it is. It is technology-based, but it's not my expertise. I do know that it was a bid that was entered into with the town as well as the board, and it was a savings.
Okay, this was a grant, right?
Yeah, it's definitely connected to internet.
Yeah, she, um, applied for a grant, which is why there was a savings that was awarded.
Okay, thank you. And I'm going to follow up on Mrs. Gernsy's question about number 12. And I'm, obviously, if, if the head principals are recommending it, then it's not that I'm looking to go against that, but I would like to hear more about specifically which departments are this. You, you mentioned word language, but I don't believe that accounts for the 3.0.
No, it doesn't. I'd have to get it for, I don't, we wrote it down and I don't have it with me tonight. I apologize. I can get that to you.
I would appreciate that, and, because I will say that if it's in social studies, that is not a department I would be in favor of. That is always the department at both schools that we start running in excess of 28 kids in a section, and that would concern me.
Yeah, I would, I would tell you, I don't think it is, but I will also tell you that when I reviewed the class sizes, that I was particularly looking to that.
Okay.
And I felt much more comfortable with those class sizes this year than I've done in the past.
Okay. Because of course, while that 20.5 per class sounds perfectly fine, we know that balancing to that number is far more difficult. And, so yes, I'd appreciate that. I was wondering if you could tell a little bit more about the Central Office Secretary, because obviously, that was a place we had hired in to help recoup on Medicaid costs, and we brought a new position in for that. So I was wondering if you could say what, what job here is going to be absorbed by somebody else?
I can, I believe I can answer that. And what we looked at was a distribution of the work among some of the instructional department secretaries. We also are going to have a change in position for, the person currently doing the Medicaid work is leaving. We're thinking of reconfiguring that position so that it still covers the Medicaid, but not exclusively, given that there might be some more time available in that job description. So we're going to rebalance some of the tasks across the, across Central Office.
Okay, thank you. I was wondering how we were doing for our retirement numbers?
Ms. DC?
Calling DC, Executive Director of Person on Legal Services. As of today, we are at 16 retirements. I think I got a 17th in my email when the board meeting started, and our projection was at 19. So I, I think there's a good chance we'll be over that for this year.
Okay, thank you. And then I'd also had, actually, to Mrs. Picko's point, I was also interested in the notion of these evaluations being covered by that S R funding, or if we covered it at this level, that I can easily see that this impact of learning loss, one of the ways that we need to address it is through effective evaluation and putting into effect whichever tier interventions are needed. So that if this number is not enough, which I can easily see is going to end up being the case, if we don't build more money in here, is that a place where we can account for that testing?
I'd have to really look at the, the way that that's written. I mean, there's some pretty broad guidance in both S R two and the new ARP S R, which is S R three essentially, around addressing learning loss. The intent of the language in both of those is, when you look at the examples provided, is, you know, intended to reach a broader swath of students. So it's summer's programs, extended day, in-school tutoring, you know, it's, it's a broader program base rather than individual student base for its, for its expectations. But again, there's, there's a lot of, there's a lot that I get the sense is not said, and there is latitude in the, in the guidance around how some of this month's funding can be spent.
And this could very well be a discussion for another day, but I've been, I've asked this in the past of how we're accounting for this funding, and I know it's going to, I believe I, Ms. Munsell directed to me that there was going to be just a line item in revenue for this. But how is that being broken down, and at what point does the board see that?
We're gonna, we can provide for you, whether, however we decide as a group to look at this, I mean, this may be part of the task of the Finance Committee, but we can break out for you, you know, like if we were to take S R two, and I talked at the last meeting that over $700,000 was essentially budgeted for both the summer program this year and next. What we can look at is the accounting of that, of what actually is spent, because in S R two, as in, as in ARP S R, you can reallocate funds that aren't spent. You know, you can tend to spend it on something and it isn't spent for whatever reason, you then have the ability to reallocate within the grant. So I, what my expectation would be is, depending on the format we decide, we can continue to provide the board updates on each of those items and each of those grants as we go forward. And as I said, I'll talk a little bit in a little while about ARP S R. But that one in particular has a requirement to essentially reevaluate the grant every six months with the public, get public input on it, and then, and then you can, again, reallocate within that as well. So I think there's a way to develop a reporting system to the board.
Okay, so officially, I would be indicated in something.
Absolutely.
Yes, please, thank you.
Yeah, Ms. Munsell won't be here to worry about that.
Can I just ask a follow up to that?
Yep, Ms. Picko?
Not every student is going to need a literacy evaluation, but can we put together some kind of program using this funding to, through intervention, SRBI, to assess current literacy skills rather than do a full evaluation with a consultation from a company like Literacy How?
We, we somewhat do that now with the STAR assessment and then the, the formal, or excuse me, the formative assessment that the teachers use in the classroom. So I think we'd have to be careful that we're not replicating the work that kind of already goes on. But yes, something we could certainly look at.
Okay. Follow up, Ms. Jacobson?
Um, piggybacking on that for the S R two, the $300,000 cut to the operational budget moving those items to the S R two grant. So that was about 1.2 million in total. We talked about summer programming being about 735-ish, plus this 300, so that pretty much takes care of almost S R two, give or take maybe 100,000 or so, right?
That's correct. We, the other funding we put in for that, and Mr. Baba George can speak more, more directly to this if there's questions, but as you, as you're likely aware, we had a, we worked with the town this year to receive, to get bonding for the controls upgrade at Fairfield Ludo High School. The next school on the project list was Tomlinson. The funding was enough to cover the Tomlinson funding, uh, controls update. So in putting that on S R two, we took that, we took that burden off the town for future bonding issues. And then we can move the next school up the list as a result. And that, and that equaled the total amount of the money.
Is the application that we put into the state, is that online or did we, or is that not online? Is that anywhere?
It's, um.
I'm more interested in the needs assessment part of that that was done.
Yeah, we can make it available to you. We just received today a notice that it was approved. So we can make that available to you.
Well, first, congratulations.
Thank you. It's all Dr. Parrish's work.
That's very good news. I really was interested in the needs assessment process, really part of it. I mean, allocations, yes, but just the information behind how you put it out there, but I'm.
We can get that to the board.
Okay, thank you very much. I too was interested in terms of the $100,000, in terms of APR as well. So maybe we can get some better idea around that for next time, because this is all about, I think that, I mean, unless I'm mistaken, the vision for the health insurance and then the 100,000, I mean, it's all, all in pie, right? But it's then, the fact is, is that you were, it's just a matter of how you're using the savings is the difference. Right?
Yeah, it's, it is.
Really, it's just how you're, it's how you're using.
We don't want to put in healthcare, we'd rather put it in special ed tuition, if we think that's going to be higher, or added evaluations instead of using the American Rescue funding for that, just bumping that up from 100,000 if we think there's going to be a greater need. Or something else. I mean, this year, I think, more so than in the past, new needs, the situation has changed so much in the last five months. We're learning so much, we're coming out of the pandemic, that there could be new needs now that we are recognizing that we may want to fund, that we didn't necessarily think we should be funding or were prepared to fund back in, well, November, December, when staff was building the budget, and January when we were approving it.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions about the adjustments before we talk about the two different scenarios?
Okay, I'm sorry, Ms. Can I just make a comment about the grant funding? Mr. Mancusi, correct me if I'm wrong, but we tend to avoid putting special ed in a grant, because for lack of better terms, you can't double dip. So if something were, would otherwise be eligible for excess cost reimbursement, if it was paid for out of a grant, it would no longer be eligible. So I would avoid anything that, you know, and especially something with like a psych eval.
Thank you, Ms. Munsell, that's.
Well, just, just to piggyback, but the grants are specifically written for special ed, low income, ELL. I mean, these grants were really meant to really help these populations, like specific to the language.
But I think that you can help those populations without having it meeting an IEP requirement, which.
Well, are these evaluations meeting an IEP requirement? These are initially valves, aren't they?
It could be either, but it, 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 they are meant for, you know, students with disabilities.
Including initials, though, that you don't, don't have an IEP yet.
Considerably, yes, but likely more for students who currently have IEPs that we've evaluated that continue to make limited progress. So we go for, you know, additional evaluations.
All right, my understanding in this line item, so that's good clarity, because it was, it seemed to me that these were for additional new evaluations for new, for initials.
Generally speaking, it's for students who already have IEPs that we are struggling with. Or for parents who, you know, might request an IEE at a PPT because they disagree with our evaluation findings.
Okay, that's helpful, thank you.
Any other questions before we move on to the two scenarios? Okay, Mr. Ace, back to you.
Okay, thank you. So without getting too deep into rehashing everything from the last meeting, you know, I made my stance known on here that I absolutely believe in the open choice program. And I do believe that a previous board voted on a plan to get us to 100 students. I understand that, I respect that. What I would like to see is, I would like to see us follow scenario one with some slight changes. And those changes, I will just, if, if the board will let me, walk you through. So I believe in this next school year, that if we did a two-year approach, so year one of a two-year approach to get us to that 100 number, would be 15 students a year. So in the budget, we have budgeted for 74 students, but we know that we have 70 coming back. So I will propose at the next meeting that we bring 15 more students, bringing us to 85 students next school year, which would be budgetary 11 more students. So instead of $78,000 of additional revenue, it would be $33,000 of additional revenue. I would further propose that we raise the health insurance line to 889,179 to make up that difference to get us to the 2 million. I will say that in the next year's budget, that we budget for 100 students to get to that goal, so adding 15 more at that point, that gets us to the original goal of the plan that we committed to, and we will budget accordingly. I, I've stated at the last meeting that I don't believe, that I believe bringing more students than, than, honestly, 15 is a lot, but I'm, I'm going with it based on the past intentions of, of previous boards and our racial imbalance plan that we agreed to. I think bringing in an additional 37 students, even 26 students, is just too much in a year coming out of a pandemic when we don't know the true effects on our own student population now without adding anymore. Again, I believe in the program, and I believe in the program for what it's worth, not because what it brings in dollar-wise. One thing I would like to stress, which was information that was provided to us from Mrs. Munsell's communications with the state, that if we were to go to a scenario two, where we are getting $6,000 a student, times 111 students, right? It will do two things. One, to me, I see a 330-some-odd thousand dollar cliff that we're building into the next year's budget, because we will revert back to the 3,000 per student. So that, some may say that we can strategically budget for that in the next year's budget. I want to be looking, I want the superintendent and his staff to be looking at areas of efficiencies and savings, and I don't want to add another $330,000 burden to them to have to find when they build the next budget. Further, it was told to us that right now, if we have billable expenses for special need, special ed on the open choice students, we are responsible to use the first $3,000 that we get from the state and then can bill Bridgeport in excess of that. With $6,000, we now have to use $6,000 before we can bill Bridgeport for the extra cost. When you look at the documents and the information that was provided in some of the Q and A to other town bodies, and you look at the percentage of students getting services from the open choice program, and you look at that percentage and of, you apply that to the additional students, it's not a true apples-to-apples increase when you're getting the 6,000, because you're going to be spending that times 20 or 30 students. And I'm not in any way saying that we shouldn't provide those services for the students that we take in, but I think it needs to be thought about in the big picture. So come next meeting, I, I would like to propose, or I will bring forth, depending on how it goes, that we, that we do take some more kids in an effort to reach our voted-on and approved previous plan, and that it's a two-year phased process. I have no interest in scenario two, and I just can't support it for the reasons that I stated at the last meeting and here. But I do think that we can serve kids, we can fulfill the mission of the program, but we need to do it in a smart and efficient and fiscally responsible way while looking at the needs of our students coming out of a pandemic, so we can serve every, each and every student appropriately.
Ms. Picko?
I don't remember exactly who here was on the board when we voted for the racial imbalance plan. I know we put 100 students in there. From that time, and I don't remember if this was a vote, but it was definitely a discussion on the board, we had actually agreed to bring the number to 85. That, that was a conversation here. I don't know how we got to 71 or 74. I believe it was under Tony Jones. I can go and look for it up. I can go look up the meeting.
Can I just, back, piggyback, the number 85 that I came up with for next year is based on what we had a couple of years ago. So that's where I came up with that number, and it is, happens to be the halfway mark to getting to 100.
I would only add that the, the reason for the decrease has been the fact that we've stalled admissions over the last couple of years due to the pandemic.
Thank you, that was one of my questions. I have given this an extensive amount of thought. I have really not changed my position on how I feel about this, but I've actually thought more about where we were pre-pandemic. more about where we were pre-pandemic. We were having a conversation about our facilities and redistricting, and we were about to approach that. And I truly want to say it again, thank you to Dr. Parrish for looking up where this was possible, but if we have to now revisit this, whatever time it is, I really don't want to have to tell parents that we're redistricting some of their kids out of a school where we've filled the seats. I think we need to go back and redistrict, sorry, go back and discuss our facilities before we have this conversation of bringing more students in. I'm not even going to touch the financial part. I said everything I wanted to say about that. And I didn't say this at the meeting then, but I'd agreed with Jeff. I went to Bridgeport Public Schools, and I was fortunate, thankfully, to come here and get a Fairfield education. I understand the value of it, but right now, I'm trying to look at the big picture here. We have a lot going on in a pandemic.
I'm not going to get too into the weeds here, I think this is a complicated topic that we need to spend a lot of time on. I'd kind of like to ask a couple of clarifying questions of Mr. Cummings. I was going to ask about the redistricting issue. We've talked in past meetings, and when this has come up in the past, about open choice students getting slots in individual elementary schools, as if they're immune to any building, redistricting shifts that we do. Obviously, there's not a lot of precedent for how we might address that, but is there a reason that we couldn't say, for someone who's currently assigned to Stratfield, let's say, well, you know, next year, we're going to move your slot to North Stratfield? As part of a district-wide shift?
I think that that would have to be a conversation with CES. I don't know if this has come up in any other open choice situation, where students were placed, and then as a result, during that placement, the district went through some type of redistricting. I think that, you know, if you think about, if you think about this from a family perspective or an individual student perspective, Mr. Peterson, I think that there may be very good reasons why an open choice student might want to go to the new school, the new placement, because of the same situation other kids feel, you know, friendships and other things. It might be more convenient for the family as well. So I think that that would require further conversation with CES, and we'll have to explore that with them to see if they've actually had to deal with this before, and how they would recommend we approach this. I would think that at the very least, some consideration to parents ahead of time that a district would be considering this should be certainly part of a parent's decision-making when they decide to opt into the lottery, that they're aware that, you know, some kind of, an understanding that the district is exploring this idea before they actually place their name in contention for a spot.
Right, and you know, I can imagine a lot of, you know, if we're telling someone from Stratfield that they're going to go to Mill Hill, it's a significant challenge, as opposed to just shifting in a regular sort of pattern. All right, well, I guess if you could follow up on that, that would be helpful. The other kind of clarifying question, we have talked about, you know, the financial bonus was increasing by 50%, and we have talked in the previous meeting about offering 40 slots with the hope of getting 37. Do we have experience in the past of, like, acceptance rates? Like, how confident are we that if we offered 40 slots, that we would get the exact number that we needed, or more? Or how, what's the risk that we get 36 students?
There's definitely a risk, and I would recommend that if we were going to be going for 37, that we would aim for a few more to kind of provide some cushion. But just in a casual conversation I had with Dr. Demay at CES, he felt that, and again, this is just a casual aside almost, that we would most likely be able to meet our target.
All right, thank you.
Ms. Guernsey?
Oh, thank you. So at our last meeting, I spoke about my concerns with adding so many new students to the open choice program, because I was concerned about meeting the needs, obviously, of our current students. And since then, I've had some conversations, and I'd like to ask Mr. Cummings this, but how, my concern is really about how we meet the needs of these open choice students, looking at scenario two, coming into this district and making sure that they're, they feel welcome and that they're cared for, because that takes up time and resources. So that's really my biggest concern, because I understand very clearly the benefit that they're bringing to our district. So, you know, how are we meeting these very unique needs? And if you could speak to that, that would be helpful. Thank you.
I think I can only speak at a very high level around that. I don't know if, you know, I know that buildings take different approaches. I would say to you that whether we take 37 students or we don't take any students next year, I have a general belief that we can do better to support these families when they make a transition. I think it's part of the efforts we should be making when we welcome any family to our community, whether they're part of the open choice program or they're coming in from another town. You know, I think that, I think there's always work to be done in becoming a more welcoming district. I think it's one of those things that I have seen be an initiative, people get better at it, and then, like so many other things, something else, some other things come along, and then you kind of lose focus on it. And, you know, we've talked about, this is a need in the district for our existing families, never mind new families. So, you know, Ms. Guernsey, I would say to you, I think, I think if we want to truly be, we talk a lot about being a district of diversity and wanting to be a district of diversity, we have more work to do to truly exemplify that approach and put it into practice.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Ms. Jacobson, followed by Ms. Max Canelli.
Hi, thank you. Where I am at is, I think I expressed, you know, on the last time we talked about this, concerns about adding a significant number of students at this time, given everything we just listened to again this evening about the status and needs of our existing students. I do know that we have our racial imbalance plan, and I respect that, that that is something that the board, whether it was my vote or not, is a living document, and that that is a commitment that Fairfield Public Schools made. So I do feel that, you know, the superintendent does have the leeway to take us to 100 students, even though I am concerned about increasing that at this point. My clarifying question for this point is that we, I believe we went over this, but to be clear, we're only looking at elementary now, not secondary. Is that correct? No matter what number we take?
I'm going to look to Dr. Parrish. I believe we had on our last iteration, students at different levels. Is that correct?
We did originally, and then we had the conversation, and then it was expressed that we were going to only do elementary.
No, I don't think that, I think that was said, but I don't think there was agreement to that.
We're still looking at all three levels?
Mrs. Max Canelli?
Yeah, you had asked the question regarding, what was the success rate at the secondary level, specifically high school, was what you had expressed, and what Mr. Cummings reported on, was that it was viewed as a positive, that it was a successful transition was made, and not rebutting any anecdotal story to the contrary. And that was the end of our conversation on that.
Okay, so we are still looking at all three levels?
Zuckia Parrish, Executive Director of Operations and Processes. The original recommendation that I had did spread the students across all three levels. So if there was a decision to do otherwise, we would just have to adjust accordingly.
And has there been any change since you originally did that work in our enrollment for next year? Like, have any of those things changed so much at this point?
Well, we have kindergarten registrations going on every day, so that's something that we expect to change, but we haven't gotten to a point where we're above what we budgeted for in terms of the number of sections at this point.
Okay, thank you. So one of the questions that I hope that we will have information on next time is the special education billing question. So if we look at budget books, to RTM documents, to, you know, what was provided also to the RTM, and just our actuals, there's different numbers for each of the years. So there's like what you budgeted, there's what you, what we actually got, and then there was a different number given to the RTM. So I'm not looking for, to understand that right now, because I think it needs some work, is to understand the variances in all of that, in terms of what actually came in and what we are budgeting for, because it's coming in less than what we budget for, which may mean that there just isn't as much need, right? But it does become part of the fiscal analysis of this. I've also asked for, if the existing students were at $6,000 today, what would that revenue drop to? So that we can have some kind of understanding. There has to be a net, right? You have, this isn't just pure revenue. You have to net back out the fiscal cliff, and you have to net back out the variance in the billing for the special ed reimbursement. Now, we already know that special, that open choice is coming in at roughly about 20% per year, but given what's happening in our own district, I would anticipate similar results, that that would be a higher number, statistically speaking. I mean, we won't know that, obviously, until they come, but this is something that we have to factor into. It's not pure, it's not pure plus, there are pluses and minuses. So we need to do the two-year net-net on this as well, in order to really know, is this really, I don't believe that this is really going to be 444, and then 222 over the two-year period, as straight pure revenue. Do you know what I'm saying?
I do. I want to make sure, though, I'm looking back to Ms. Muncel, to make sure that we've got your questions right before, I want to make sure that...
I didn't expect it for today.
No, 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 no.
But for next time, yeah.
But since you're saying them, I want to make sure that we're getting them down. That's, I just want to make...
What I'm saying is, if you took the 70 students that we have now, the ones we gave to the RTM, that this year we have, sorry, 14, we gave to the RTM that this year we have 14 open choice students who are receiving special ed services. If they, if they were at the $6,000 mark, what would be the change in the revenue for this year, first billing? That's what I'm looking to find out. That's not going to help me for next year, but it's going to give me an idea on the variance. Do you understand what I'm saying? Because it's going to go down.
By $3,000, right? Wouldn't it just be the 3,000? We would just be paying, we wouldn't be losing the revenue, 3...
No.
Not necessarily, right? Yeah.
We can bill at 3,000 and 1.
I understand, I got you.
Right, there you go.
And why I'm bringing this up is, we've got millions and millions of dollars in special education overages right now. Now we're looking at needing to possibly look at, already being in a deficit for next So I'm just really concerned, plus, we're not getting the federal funds to address those needs for those students. Bridgeport is getting those funds. We're not getting those funds, correct? They don't, those federal funds, like the S or 2, and even for the students that we've got, those funds don't come to us, right?
That's right, it's off Bridgeport's base, that's right.
Can we ask them for that allocation?
We can always ask.
Well, I mean, right.
I'm not trying to be funny, but, no, I know, I know.
I mean, this is a collaborative spirit. At the end of the day, this is about collaboration. Like, look, you know, we're considering this, but we recognize that even with our own students, that there's going to be pandemic-related issues for which you will be receiving those funds. Can you work with us at the 182 million to 5? Is that a valid point?
It's a valid point.
I'd like to know what the answer to that is. If you would be willing to ask it. Or, you know what, I'd be willing to ask it.
Yeah, I know you would, but...
I can make that phone call.
I think, I think one of the things that we have to, we have to get inside is the formula of the funding.
I understand, and I did it, and it's, you know, I mean, at least my own guesstimate, but...
But it's certainly a question worth asking.
It's a significant variance, because it's three and a half years, right? It's a three-and-a-half-year period, this isn't one-year money, right? It covers a number of years, so you got to break it down, so I get it. It's a legitimate request. And you know what? These funds are available to be partnered with nonprofit organizations to maximize their benefit, and, you know, and to make, they extend to... So, I don't know, I think it's worthy of the question. So where am I at on scenario two? I'll get to the point. You know, until I have the analysis, I think I'm on scenario one at this point, until I have a better read on what the nets are over time. Not just a one-off, bring in the number, but then not know what's going to happen after that. But I understand our commitment to the racial imbalance plan, and, you know, I'm somebody who tries to stand by our docs, so that's where I'm at.
Ms. Pickle. She has a follow-up, thank you.
Mr. Cummings, I did send you an email after our last meeting, asking about the financials on the town side for what we get for the students. I remember we had this whole conversation about we get half for each student, and you told me you were going to get me the numbers, but now that we have these scenarios, I'm wondering if we can also get what it would be in the scenarios.
Ms. Pickle, I'm not sure what you mean by the town side.
It's the ECS cost...
Ms. Muncel provided the formula. It is, it's minimal to the ECS, just because it's, the student counts as a half of a student in the funding?
I know, but Mrs. Max and Canelli had brought it up and had given us a dollar amount, and we were going to check on that.
Yeah.
And now I want to know, in these two scenarios, what that would be, because would that money just go to the town, or would we get it back?
The number, it was not as large as we thought it might have been.
Ms. Muncel, do you remember what that...
It was like $250, I think, between the two, between going... For ECS, the number is 11, 1150, 11,000, 11,500, around that, right? Per student. Multiplied by the number of students, times the wealth index, which is 1%, which brings the number down. That's if we're fully funded, which we're not.
Oh, okay.
I could, we can send you the formula.
So, I'm also saving for... No.
They count, they count the open choice student as a half. Half of the student gets counted in our student count, and half gets counted in Bridgeport student count. Now, Bridgeport doesn't have the same, you know, ratio for wealth.
It's the weight.
It's the weight.
I got it.
It's the weight. We can send you that, you know, if you want to see the analysis, go through the spreadsheet, but it really is the weight that...
I would like to see, especially with these two scenarios. I mean, it's still money. I want to see what we're going to get.
I just, I just would like to add that there's another, there's a third area of funding every year for, if we have facilities with 10 or more open choice students. We get a share of a pot every, that's variable every year, but it's additional money. It's, again, it's kind of a de minimis, but that's, I believe those are the three venues through which we get open choice money.
And Ms. Pickle, just to follow up on another one of your questions about those districts in the Hartford region that we're getting more, the difference is just they have additional funding going to Capital Region due to Chef O'Neal, just money.
And my argument to that is, then we need to advocate for CES to get more tuition from the state. It's got to be equitable across the state, I mean...
Yeah, Ms. Pickle, I'd just really be careful, because Chef and O'Neal is a whole little level of, Ms. Muncel has direct experience with it, I would not recommend that we have that situation in Fairfield County. It would, it would hurt this district.
That is just some of the differentials of some of the open items. Mrs. Max, done? Before, okay, thank you. Mrs. Max Canelli?
Okay, thank you. So just to reiterate, I would be interested, Ms. Muncel, in both sets of numbers, both what would be the impact on the town, because I don't, I didn't realize we'd ever got that as an email since our last meeting. So that, this was completely new to me, that we actually knew a definitive number, so I'm not, I don't want to calculate it at the table, but that number, as well as the one... one in reference to what Mr. Peterson said, just so we have, I mean, to Mrs. Jacobson's point, if we are trying to get a more accurate sense, sense of the expenses, we should also be getting more accurate sense of the revenue all in. As for the two plans, immediately I'm not interested in scenario three. I'm not interested in a, in a two-year. I, I very much respect Mr. Asa's argument and I appreciate how thoroughly he laid it out, but I, I'm not interested in that. I have been interested in scenario two. I mean, heck, I'd been on board with the 95 although I, I said that knowing that we weren't going to go there, but, and I do think that would have been excessive. However, if we were offered a 3 to 400,000 dollar grant, just a hypothetical grant, and we're told that you're going to get this grant for one year, but it's going to create a cliff that you're going to make up for the next year, we take the money. So number one, in terms of the argument about creating a fiscal cliff, that to me is not a valid, that is not a reason for me for choosing scenario one or scenario three versus scenario two. So it's something that obviously we have to be aware of upfront. You know, I think all in all, I think there's a lot of regret that we were, that we worked as hard as we did to bring ourselves to a zero, considering what it did to our budget this year and, and the difficulty of that situation. And I think there's some regret on the town side as well for how difficult their budget struggles were and, and for reconciling everything. So that if I'm looking at 26 versus 37, spread out across all of those grades, you're looking at just over two students per building as an average. That is not a daunting number for Fairfield Public Schools. It's just not. And that we could get in line for that grant, that additional expenditure, and again, I'm interested in the full numbers being laid out, that those are 11 more students who would have an absolutely life-changing transformative experience by virtue, and yes, I do think we can say that about Fairfield Public Schools, and that's not to denigrate what they're going to get in Bridgeport, but they're obviously pursuing this for a reason. And it's because of the opportunity it presents to them, and I believe that that is something that Fairfield Public Schools will deliver on. A transformative, life-changing experience simply to jump from 26 to 37. Those are 11 children that we will be touching in that way and that we can do it. And also, I would, I would put it as a positive that this is a pandemic. It means that we have all hands on deck with awareness of learning loss. We have all hands on deck with sensitivity and awareness of the social and emotional impact that this past year has had, year plus has had on our students. And I think that in that regard, our staff would be utterly collaborative and supportive on a whole other level for all of our students in a way that would be so supportive to their learning and to their growth and their mental and academic success. Mental growth, academic success, emotional support, et cetera. So I would be in favor of scenario two because I do not view the difference between 26 to 37 as being that significant mathematically across this district. If we were a smaller district, that's a completely different scenario. If we were thinking of them all in one school, well, that's, which obviously we're not, that would be a different scenario. But we have 17 schools. We're going across the levels. This is absolutely something that we can do, we are in a position to do, and to a certain degree, I'd even say shame on us if we do not. There's very few times in your life you're going to be able to say you get to change somebody's life and we have that, we're in that position now. And I, I do want to be clear, no question, our first responsibility is to the students and the residents of the town of Fairfield. I don't, I don't mean to belittle that or overlook that. That is absolutely our charge, our first responsibility. I do not believe we will be shortchanging them if we pursued this course.
Mr. Asa?
Yep. Thank you, Mrs. Max and Cannelly. And I don't, what I'm going to say is not to argue your point, but I just want to clarify a couple of things. So one, I, I don't believe based on what was presented to us, that it would simply be two per school because some schools weren't able to get them. So that is a little, to me, a little slight oversimplification. And another clarifying point, when you say if you were going to get a grant for $300,000, you take the money. I want to refer to the federal funding that we've been talking about and, and what our superintendent has sat in front of other town bodies and actually said the contrary in that he has no interest in using grant money to create cliffs. So again, I'm not arguing the minutia here, but I just want to put that clarifying factor out there that we have gone before other town bodies and specifically said that we don't want to use grant money to create cliffs if we don't have to, so.
Ms. Jacobson?
Um, I just wanted to follow up with a comment and say that I appreciate the transformative nature and the value of that to those who are coming here, but it made it sound like we weren't taking any additional, we are still saying yes to additional open choice students here, so we are engaging in that transformative process. It's just a matter of how many. And the, the information that we received from Dr. Parrish, I don't know if it's possible while we're getting the numbers for the three buckets of funding and asking the superintendent of Bridgeport some questions. If we can, the information that we got was based on 95. Since we know that that's not going to be happening, is, should that be updated for these scenarios, so to speak, so that we have an idea of that? I don't know if that's possible or not, but-
The possible placements?
Yeah, like so the seven, going to 100 and then going to the 111. Where would be, you know what I'm saying? Just so we have a better idea, because the one, what we have is for a much larger number, so it kind of makes it look more daunting. Thank you.
Ms. Rotelli?
Thank you. I, I have a couple of thoughts about this topic. I have no interest in supporting scenario two. My main concern is the well-being of our students. And to me, there seems to be a rush to do this and I understand the value of the program, but there's no reason for us not to press the pause button here. We are in the middle of a pandemic. We have heard tonight the anticipation of the needs going into next year. We've, listened to Ms. Jacobson go over the numbers for sped and what we've had this year, and I just, I don't quite understand, knowing the anticipation of that, why we are sort of rushing into taking on more when we should just hit the pause button and breathe and see how things work into next year. Now, I actually like Mr. Asa's suggestion. I think it's still a compromise into taking more seats and getting us to the ultimate goal of the 100 students. So I could get on board with that, but at the end of the day, this is about trying to take care of our kids right now. And I am still seeing a level of trauma and mental health issues in our schools. And those things are very serious. So I just, I'd caution everybody to just take a breath. Not everything needs to be done in the next year and pushing everything forward. We will get there.
Mrs. Gerber, follow up, Ms. Pickle?
Yeah, in November of 2016, I was one of the board members who voted in favor of the racial imbalance plan that included getting us to 100 open choice students by 2018-19. So we're three years behind that. And so for that reason, I do support scenario one. While I philosophically support scenario two, I am concerned about it for a number of reasons, which I spoke to at the last meeting, but I'll keep this brief because we've been talking about this for quite a while, but I do support scenario one and I, I think just, and I'm looking at it, I mean, I agree with lots, lots has been said tonight and other nights about all of the positive impact that open choice has on the students coming into our district, on the students in our district. I wholeheartedly agree with all of that. I'm looking at it from a purely dispassionate perspective that I voted to have 100 students here in 2018-19. They aren't here and for a number of reasons that I agree with and understand, but I just feel at this point, I have no plans to be the person sitting at the table across from the State Board of Education and the commissioner when, if and when that happens, but I do want to do my part to ensure that whoever is doing that is able to say that we are at a place that we told the state we would be at three years ago.
Ms. Pickle?
I don't have the racial imbalance plan in front of me, but I do remember that we also said we would redistrict. And we did start to have that conversation and plan, but we didn't do that either. So I think that when we do go in front of the state board, we really didn't adhere to our plan. I, I wasn't going to bring this up, but I feel like, you know, if you don't say it at the table, then you didn't say it. And so I'm going to say this one more time. I don't feel this is the time to do this. I think the message that we're sending to our district, we had to cut part of art. We had to cut the math academy. We had to cut the remote learning academy even before we knew that we wouldn't be doing that. We just found $2 million or roughly. I don't think it's the time to tell the district, we're now going to take more students from another district in when our kids need so much right now. So I'm sorry, I can't support any of these because I don't believe that we should be adding the students right now. I, when this first came up at the finance committee, I emailed Mike and I said, this is a conversation you have in November. When you get your enrollment projections, you look at what you're possibly going to do and you budget for this. Mrs. Rotelli said it best. We're rushing. We originally thought we were rushing because we had to give a number by Friday of that week. Now I just feel like this, this is not right for right now. If you want to revisit this in November, I will fully support it then.
Ms. Jacobson?
Um, just out of curiosity, Mr. Cummings, what did CES say when you informed them that we were going to need a little bit more time on this?
They, they can accept the June 1st.
They did? Okay. All right.
I will not be supporting scenario three. I am still leaning towards scenario two, to really, to Mrs. Max Cannelly's point that I think that our district has the capacity to take on these additional students. I absolutely want us to get us to 100 so we can be in line with our racial imbalance plan, which, you know, we were supposed to be at 100 students three years ago. I don't really think this is rushing the process in that we, we know how to educate students and I'm expecting staff under the guidance of the superintendent to build capacity, hopefully using some of this federal money, to benefit all students regardless of what their home address might be. I view this money, you know, the, maybe, maybe it's not for, over $400,000. Maybe when you take in the special education, it's $300,000. That is still, you know, a lot of money for a year as we're coming out of a pandemic and facing some additional needs. I see this, you know, we're looking at it a different, I respect your opinion, Ms. Pickle, but I, I look at it a different way. I'm like, what, this is $300,000 that instead of putting it into health insurance, could it, could it be, we be using that for the next year to support remote learning? Could we be putting it into special education to support those students? Could we be putting it to the math academy for another year, being that a lot of the work surrounding math curriculum this year had to be postponed? I see it as an opportunity. I mean, this is the initial conversation, this, this meeting. You know, I'm open to hearing, you know, board members, other suggestions on how to move forward, but, you know, I, I think this is the time to do this. I absolutely appreciate Ms. Currensey's concerns about making these families feel welcome, but I think that this, that is good work that I think our district and our kids can get around and would benefit all of them. At a time where, as Ms. Rotelli says, kids need healing and sometimes the best way to heal is to make our kids feel empowered. And, you know, welcoming these students provide, could provide an opportunity for those kids to feel empowered if we do it right. So that's where I am at this, at this particular point in time. Mr. Asa?
Yeah. So I'm actually not going to talk about this now, but I'm curious, as we approach our next meeting, how, how do we anticipate this being brought before us? Because there will have to be a motion on the agenda and procedurally, I'm just curious, hypothetically, if scenario two were on the agenda, how are we going to account for the extra $366,000? Or what would, what would the plan be? How, basically bottom line is how are we going to move forward from here on out? There was a lot of very good conversation tonight, but what is the next step now that we have two different scenarios going into the next meeting?
Before I answer that question, I want to see if anybody else has any other suggestions or thoughts about the budget, whether or not revisions or, you know, addition. Mrs. Max and Cannelly?
Um, thank you. And just quickly to Mr. Asa's point, I think what ultimately just on the agenda, we commit to one big number, one scenario, and then let the, the amendments go from there. I mean, I don't think the, I don't think the motion necessarily has to try to capture this, the conversation. You pick a starting point and go, go from there. I mean, that's my read on it, but, no, fair point.
Based on right now, what the comments made, I think I would probably start with scenario one, being that that is where our plan is and make a, we'll see.
But as we get these additional numbers, in all fairness, if we could cost out a scenario three column so that we have all of the numbers in front of us and no one's pulling out their napkins, so. But to have a completely different point, which has already been referenced a few times tonight and actually started our meeting, I did reach out to Mr. Cummings and Ms. Vitale prior to the meeting to express my interest and my concerns regarding the math academy. And it has been one I've, I'm, I'm not, I'm not looking to revisit all of the arguments that I've presented over the years for how fervently and enthusiastically I support the work that they've done and how they have far exceeded our wildest dreams with that. I accept the will of the board. I accept the direction of the district that it's looking to move ultimately, that's the word I'm trying to key in on here, ultimately move away from that and embed this in the work of the elementary schools. And from an equity aspect, I do respect that decision. Not for 2021, 22, for this reason. I think that our math leadership, I think that our curriculum leadership has had their hands full this year with assessing where we are and making adjustments. I think right now they have got to have their hands full with planning whatever our summer program is going to be to support the significant learning loss, which has been specifically identified in math as being where it is most, most marked. So that when you consider how our math leadership and the math support within the elementary schools has been up until now very much focused on the here and now, that they have just, you know, only relatively recently, as we've committed to this summer program, turned their attention to planning for that program. And then this summer, they're going to be the work of maintaining that as well as assessing how we grapple with the learning loss of net, of math overall in the curriculum of next year. The one thing you don't hear anywhere in there is how are they going to roll out the curriculum, the method of delivery and the organization for the math academy students or those students who would qualify? They're not even in the conversation and I'm not arguing that they should be. There are, time is finite and I think our leadership, that is something that they have not been able to turn their attention to. And this can't wait for a district improvement plan. There is, it is irresponsible to wait and just say, okay, well, we'll start addressing this in the district improvement plan of this year to roll out in September 2022. That is an entire year of third graders where we know, and we know it because we told them, the current students in the math academy, as the parents have spoken to and as we've addressed at this table, have learning needs that differentiated instruction do not meet. They don't. They don't in literature as well and in literacy, which is why we're now bringing out the early literacy academy. Math is not different. We weren't meeting their needs before and now we are willfully saying, we're going to take away something with proven success to meet those needs for the students who could take advantage of it. And again, I, I am not arguing for this for the, for ad infinitum. This is because it's one thing too many to address for September- This is because it's one thing too many to address for September of 2021, to have staff and the math science specialists in the elementary schools ready to not only deal with the massive learning loss across the entire district, but oh yes, the exceptional math students as well. You know, we, there's a reference to the unique needs. We have a program right now serving an underserved population with proven success. And so that is something I am interested in doing. And again, I spoke with Mr. Cummings. I don't have a definitive proposal right now in terms of how we will account for that money. It would be a single FTE, possibly, because once we actually know the interest in it, there's also the possibility that it's going to be cost neutral. And I, and again, I want to assure the Board, I am not looking to, to entrench this and make it permanent. I accept that this is going back to the elementary schools for a host of reasons. We're simply not prepared to do it for next year. And therefore, if we don't continue with the math academy, we are telling that entire year of our current third graders, we can't meet your educational needs. We'll do the best we can in middle school. And I just think we have a program that works, that serves them well, that could be cost neutral, although we'll account for it with whatever amendment I put forward. And I just think it would be a shame for us to not do so.
Mr. Peterson, follow by Mr. Asa.
Through the chair to Mrs. Max Canelli. Just to, just to be clear, if we're talking about extending the program and enrolling a, a new fourth grade class, that's going to be at least a two-year commitment if we're, if we're maintaining the current system, correct?
Not at least. It will be a two-year commitment, yes.
And a logistical question for Mr. Cummings. Assuming that this, this is a voting item for our next meeting, will there be, will it be possible to enroll a new fourth grade class in the short time that we, that we have?
It would be tight. It would, it would be similar to almost that first year when we had to essentially sign that first, fourth grade after the, that budget vote in late May, but we, we know it can be done.
Thank you.
Mr. Asa.
Mr. Peterson asked the two questions I had.
Any comments or questions about math academy? In terms of timing, Mr. Cummings, go ahead.
I just, through the chair to Mrs. Max Canelli. My issue with the math academy always was, it was an opt-in approach. It wasn't meeting all the students that identified. I would feel better in knowing that that teacher, say, went to three different schools or split the day or something, because there's a huge population of students who are still not receiving that differentiated instruction. So that, that's the reason why I can't fully support that. I need to know that these children are receiving the instruction that they need.
Mrs. Max Canelli.
And, and to that point, Ms. Picko, it's not going to happen. There are students who still, whose needs still will not be met. Now, some of them, remember, are met due to summer work, that they get the acceleration in order to accelerate heading into the middle school due to summer work. So those were always students, we, we have always had students who took that approach and simply accepted lack of acceleration during the school year. And, and that's what I mean. I do sincerely take to heart the argument that has been offered at this, at this Board, you know, multiple times regarding the equity of access, and that there are students even with the math academy who are not being served. Absolutely right. But why should we be leaving behind? I mean, this year, we've got a group of 21 students. Those are 21 students who would have been left behind in this regard, who would have had their unique educational needs not met if we did not have the math academy. And as I said, if it weren't for everything that we're dealing with that's COVID-related, I would not be bringing this up. I would not be trying a backdoor, okay, Mr. Cummings brought forward a budget, clearly articulated to all of the town boards that we were dropping the math academy and me trying to slip it in the back door, I want to bring this back. This is solely because I do not think we will have anything adequate in September. And that's just wrong, in my opinion. So I, I accept the premise of what you're saying absolutely. There are still going to be students whose needs are not sufficiently met, but we certainly don't have to blatantly leave ourselves open to, well, we'll try to differentiate a little bit. We've got a little extra packet. We might have a pullout a half an hour a week of a little bit of extra math help. We weren't meeting them three years ago. It won't be met this coming school year.
Ms. Rotelli.
Thanks. Mr. Cummings, you had not included the math academy in your budget proposal this year, and you had told us that, you know, you're, you wanted to bring it to all kids. So I, I've heard Mrs. Canelli's concerns that, you know, that's not going to happen, but can you tell us what discussions you've had with math leadership and, and how you plan on bringing that to all students in all schools?
I think that Ms., Ms. Canelli raises valid concerns about our ability to do that for next year. I think that the, the issues that she raises around the issues that have confronted Mr. Wakeman and the math science teachers at the elementary schools are real ones that have happened this year. And I think, as we've talked over the past few weeks, particularly around the issues of building the summer program and thinking about extending the work into next year, the tutoring work or the acceleration work that's going to have to take place in the buildings or in the extended day program once the school year begins, we do think that that's going to consume more and more of the staff time. So I think that, I think the goal would remain the same, but I think our ability to deliver on that promise right now is going to, is compromised by the impact of the pandemic on our staff.
Any other questions, Ms. Rotelli?
Any other thoughts on the budget adjustments? All right, as I said, Ms. Jacobson?
Sorry. And I don't know, Mr. Cummings, if this is possible or not in time for our next meeting, but I think it'd be helpful, since there seems to be some ideas around some changes, if we had an idea of just some preliminary thoughts at all. I mean, I know we have to go through a whole process for ARP, but just if you have any thoughts on, on that being used for anything budgetarily that's in the operating, if we could have an idea of that.
For the, for the 21, '22 budget?
Yeah.
I, I will tell you, I will definitely do this, but I will tell you, based on what I learned over this week from the expectations for ARPESR, I don't think that that's.
So like the filters or whatever, you know what I'm saying? Like the things that do actually qualify? So I'm just wondering if that's part of the process, that's not part of the process, whatever, because it seems that there are some adjustments.
There's definitely, well, I'll talk about the ARPESR and the grant in a minute, and I could give you some idea. Yeah, no, that's fine.
Okay, seeing no other comments, as I said, Board members, you have a lot to think about. We'll get those, Mr. Cummings, we'll get answers to some of the questions that were put forth tonight. I would ask Board members if you have any ideas of adjustments that you want to make to this, just to get them to, to me and the Superintendent as soon as possible. Based on that feedback, I will craft a motion for our, our next agenda. And I guess we'll leave it there for now and move on. Update on ESER 2 and American Relief Fund.
Okay, thank you. So I've talked before about ESER 2, so let me, let me jump into the ESER, the ARPESER. And this is now actually called the ARPESER. Or ESER 3. Those words don't mean anything. Just, they're just acronym crazy. We did get some information on this. Ms. Manziel and I listened to a webinar from the State Department on Monday morning, and I'm going to go through, I shared with the Board the PowerPoint on this, but let me just kind of hit some of the highlights. So from the, from that PowerPoint, I'm not going to hit every slide, but as was discussed a little bit before, the way that the, the Fed, federal government and the state is defining the, you know, the three ESERS. ESER 1 was about survival. ESER 2 is about thriving. And ARPESR, they really identify the, the action verb there is transforming. So that's how they want us to think about the work we're going to do. The only requirement in the, in the grant that we receive, it, well, I shouldn't say the only requirement, but the only set aside in the grant is that the LEAs must reserve 20% of their allocation to address learning loss through the implementation of evidence-based interventions and ensure those interventions respond to students' social motion on academic needs, so they're not just academic responses, and address disproportionate impact on underrepresented subgroups. There is a, a real focus in this, in this grant around this issue of equity. And that disaggregation of your data based on, again, your represent, your underrepresented subgroups. But I, I think one of the things that we have to keep in mind, and the grant, this idea of evidence-based interventions was also an essential requirement of ESER 2. So we had to identify when we looked at the summer reading, summer program, the types of things that were based in evidences in terms of intervention supports. So just to give you an example of that, if the district were to buy remediation software, for example, our expectation, at least internally, would be that that would be implement, software that was, had high evidence of success. Excuse me. The LEA allocation is based on, this is not the formula, but on respective shares of Title I Part A funds under the ECA, Elementary and Secondary Education Act of '65 for fiscal year '20. So it's going back to 20, 2020 to make that determination. The language in the grant is around equity-focused lens. They asked that we establish our priorities under an equity-focused lens. We're not quite sure what that means. The state told us they're not quite sure what that means. So we should be getting some further understanding. I mean, it's out, it's out, I don't want to disparage this comment at all. It's absolutely right, but how that actually plays out in the grant, we're not clear on yet. The timeline, the timeline is of course tight. On May 17th, we'll, they'll release in the grant portal to us some assurances that the Superintendent has, has to sign. I think these are basically checkoff. I think these are relatively simple assurances. It sounds like we can do it in, just online. But it basically saying that we're going to abide by the terms of the grant when we take the money. Then a week later, though we have a week to complete those, man, when you complete the assurances, they're going to give you two-thirds of the money that we can obligate or that we can encumber for spending later. So we can begin to allocate the funding if there was immediate need, say, around COVID needs or PPE, those types of things. Then on June 7th, we have to, let me skip that one. June 23rd, we have to do, complete a safe return to in-person instruction plan, and we have to make that plan public. So that's 43 days away. Knowing what we had to do, this immediately said, I was not in the room with anybody else watching this webinar, but I think collectively throughout the state, I felt a shudder from every Superintendent watching, because this brought back memories of the work that had to go take place last summer. The caveat here is that in Connecticut, we may be well-placed to complete this plan because it sounds like, one, they're going to give us a template. Two, it sounds like many of the elements of our current reopening plan that all schools had to complete for the state are going to fall into this new plan. So it may be some reorganization, but it's the mitigation strategies, it's all those types of things that are already in our current plan. And I will say, as a precaution to people, it does sound like mitigation strategies to some degree are going to be expected to be in effect in the fall. So that's at least the preliminary understanding. And again, this is the federal government telling the state that. But again, we, we'll see what that actually means in practice. So that plan requires, I want to make sure, make sure I get this right for the Board, but there's, there's two definitions in the, in our understanding that we have to comply with, or two things that we must comply with in this work. One is getting public input, and the other is stakeholder input. So the way it was defined for us is public input would be that you'd put a draft of your plan online and you'd gather comments on it. You'd have people react to it. Stakeholder input, which you actually have to apply to take in while you're putting your grant together, is a far more formalized process. And I'll talk about that in a second. But I just want to be clear that this public input, we have to get public input on the plan, and then every six months, we're going to be expected to update the plan, and, and each of those six-month junctures, get additional public input. So the plan may change, you know, because one, the funding changes, we make decisions, changes in the funding, or the funding, the plan may change because the mitigation strategies change. But every time, every six months, there'll be a formalized process for, for this to occur. If, I get in the weeds and I apologize, but if, if, when we get the template, if there's an understanding from the state that our current reopening plan does, does not need a tremendous amount of restructuring, that June 23rd date may be waived and we might get an additional six months to adjust. So if, that may happen for all of us in the state, it may happen for some of us in the state, but we won't know yet. So right now, we're planning for June 23 to get this, but if I come back to the Board and say we got some extra time, it's only because the, our current plan needs modification, not totally, totally be rewritten, essentially is our understanding. And then in mid-August, I think literally mid-August, we, we submit the ESER application, the grant applications actually due, and then, and then we actually have to obligate all the funds by, this is way out now, well, seemingly, September 30th, 2024. So the grant runs through the first quarter of the '24, '25 fiscal year. The application for the grant is an extension, will, hopefully will look very similar to the ESER 2 application and build off of that. So to Ms. Jacobson's question before about the needs assessment, we shouldn't have to redo the needs assessment for this, for additional summer programming. That's, again, just some of the things we're hoping for, what this means. Continuity of Services Plan, this is the plan that's due on June 23. Just a couple of things on this. It's, we have to make it available on the website for comment. This is what I meant about this. If an LEA developed a plan before ARP was enacted that does not address the outlined requirements but otherwise complied with the requirements for public posting and comments, the LEA must revise its plan no later than six months after it was last reviewed its plan. So we have some additional time based on our reopening plan because that was part of a public process. And I think that's pretty much essentially that. Just one thing I want to say, this is a component of the plan, last thing I'll say. The plan must include how the LEA will address the academic, social, emotional, and mental health needs of all students, in particular disadvantaged populations, including students from low-income families, students of color, English learners, children with disabilities, students experiencing homelessness, children in youth in foster care, and migratory students. And part of the stakeholder expectation is that a district, district should reach out specifically to parents of its English learners, specifically to parents of the special education students, specifically to students of, parents of students of color and those types of things. So that you have to specifically reach out to each of those stakeholder groups when you're putting your plan together. And that's it. So I don't know if there's any questions.
Mr. Peterson?
Yeah, Mr. Cummings, just for clarification, you sent an email to the board a few days ago about the final amounts for this. Can you still confirm that while we were expecting $3.1 million from this, it's actually going to be coming in closer to $2.9 million?
That is correct.
Thank you.
One thing I will add to that, there was some understanding that, given the quick turnaround, this was not specific enough to my taste, but given the quick turnaround of the grant, that the district could make some decisions to hold funds back kind of under a to-be-determined status. So to give you an example of how they, I would like this to play out. If we decide to engage in some, let's say we want to do professional learning around equity issues in the district, and we want to bring somebody in or some organization in to work with our staff and students, but we don't have that provider in place yet. Because if you think about it, if you're a provider of that service, there's going to be a lot of districts knocking on your door in the summer. You may not be able to get to every knock. It's our hope that we'd be able to put some monies aside and not allocate, perhaps allocate to an initiative but not to a specific entity yet in order to determine pricing, availability, those types of things. Because that turnaround time is going to put a strain on available supports for districts, professional learning services, outside consultants, all those types of things that districts might be seeking. And I would hope that the state and the federal government would allow some additional time so that we're not rushed in making decisions. And I think people will spend their money better if that's taken into account.
Ms. Jacobson?
Thanks, Mr. Cummings. I have a question about the obligating of funds. So it seemed a little counterintuitive to be able to obligate your funds before you submit an application or engage in the public process. Am I understanding that correctly?
Yes.
When you say obligate, do you mean actually expend?
No, just obligate.
Just plan for?
Yes, exactly.
All right. So that doesn't mean expend some of this money before we go through the process?
That's right.
Okay, thank you very much.
Any other questions? Ms. Max Cunnelly?
Just one quick question. This was referenced at our last meeting, and that was for the hiring for the summer school, that you were worried about quality available staff. Have we started that advertising yet? And if we have, how is it going?
We have advertised, I don't know if anybody has an idea of how many applicants we've got to this point. We have, we're looking to hire, we have an elementary program facilitator principal, we're looking to hire a middle school program facilitator, and then we'll be hiring the staff. But you have an answer.
I can start and Dr. Parrish can jump in. We have posted for the middle school principal, and we're actively in the process of looking to fill that position, and we've been finalizing the job descriptions for the teaching staff positions, and I believe those will go up tomorrow.
So we actually have interviews scheduled for the middle school principal. Those will be coming up the next two days with hopes to have someone in place by the end of the week so that they can assist with the interviewing and selection of the teaching and support staff.
Do we have?
The elementary person is on board already.
Can you talk about the timeline for the letters to go to the students? This week, next, beginning of next week?
The letters are being revised. I know they're in the middle of revision. A number of people are looking at those letters, and so the hope is that they can get out, if not the end of this week, early next week, so that we can start getting confirmation from parents and families about which students are going to participate.
We're going to distribute those directly through the school.
Ms. Jacobson?
Given that a lot of the funds for this are fixed costs, such as the administrators, the nurses, the teachers, and whatnot, in terms of the expenditures for this tutoring program, is there some idea around, you know, minimum expectations in order to expend all these funds? Like, I know you're trying to meet, you know, about 300 students or so needs. Let's say 50, say yes, are we still going to spend the $735,000?
No. You can then reallocate the funding.
To more private type?
To other work within the district.
Or could we still somehow work with, I guess it'll just be TBD, but just thought process, depending on the outcomes of this, we might shift some of that, right?
Yeah, we might shift it. I mean, we had some conversation today about extended day program once the school year begins, as well as the possibility of running tutoring programs during the school day and how we might do that.
Yeah, okay, okay. That's probably a lot of ideas, just wanted to make sure we weren't, we had, okay, thank you.
Any other questions on this? Okay, moving on. Approval of minutes at the Board of Education, approve the following minutes from April 6th, 2021 special meeting, and April 20th, 2021 regular meeting, and April 27th, 2021 reg special meeting. Mr. Peterson, seconded by Mr. Asa. Any questions, discussion? Seeing none, we'll take it to the board for a vote. All in favor? Motion carries 9-0. Moving on to the superintendent's report.
Thank you. I want to start by just addressing the issue that happened at Ward this week. I want to thank again Mr. Cavendish and his staff for addressing that, and the students for bringing it to the administrators' attention. Just to reiterate, I hope it's clear here, is clear in Fairfield Public Schools, that while these types of incidents, we'd like to all avoid them, and we'd all like to think that these things should not happen, the fact is that these things are going to continue to happen. Our goal always remains that every one of our students, staff, and member of our community is in a safe place when they're in our school system and a part of our community. So we don't, this is not tolerated, it's going to be addressed, it will be addressed appropriately by the staff at Fairfield Ward. And our, all of this work is really a two-pronged approach. One is to address with appropriate consequences the behavior, the misbehavior of students and the wrong-headed actions and the expressions of intolerance that we cannot abide by. But the other part of this is the continual education of our students to help them move forward and to grow. And that will be our, that's going to always be our work. So again, I just want to emphasize that these are intolerable actions, they're going to be addressed. And we will continue as a district to learn from this in order to become more preventative in our work. I wanted to point out, if people have not already seen it, that the, and to thank our art staff, our art teachers throughout the district, and the students and their families for the artwork that is currently on display on the website. I want to thank Ms. Hermanson and the teachers who put that together. I was going through it yesterday, it's just fabulous. Some of the artwork at all levels, but I'm continually just dazzled by the work that is produced by our high school students. So if you've not done it, set some time aside, you will get lost in some of those presentations. You won't want to come back out of them. And I won't, no, nobody will stop you. If you want to stay there, go ahead. But it definitely is well worth your time. And the last thing, I just want to address the comments that were made by several callers at the beginning of the meeting around the masks. I want to make really clear that the superintendent of Fairfield Public Schools, the superintendent in any school district for that matter, really does not have it within their authority to say to the State Department of Public Health that what they tell us to do with masks, we're going to ignore. Now, I understand and respect the issues that, particularly around outside use of the masks, but it was reiterated again on the DPH call today, several times, that as of this moment, students are still expected to wear masks when they're outside. Now, that could change, right? We know that the governor is making changes on May 19th. Whether that's going to apply to students or not, we're seeking some clarity. But we really don't have the authority to say no to that. And I recognize the concerns that people raise, I get it. But we're continuing to follow the guidance that tells us that this is the safe thing to do for students. At this point, there's no indication, none, that there'll be a lifting of guidance for And I think that's even right now applying to the adult population from what I understand. But as we know, things change, they change with the afternoon press conferences, and if they change, we will change. But again, that just speaks to the fact that I know any other superintendent don't have the authority. We listen like you do to the press conferences, and then we make adjustments. So I just want to reiterate that for everybody. And that's all I've got.
Prom? Do you have an update on prom?
Oh, on prom? Oh, yeah, there's, the proms are taking place. We talked about their tents. They're going to take place at the schools, but what I understand is students have decided not to eat. I know it seems just crazy, but they're going to have, take away, I'm looking at Mr. Papa George because he was at the meeting, but essentially, they're going to be taking food away from food trucks at the end of the evening, correct? But they'll be dancing, they'll have single-use water bottles, there'll be places for them to kind of go and get fresh air. But I think that, I want to thank the, well, I don't know, is there anything I missed on that, Mr. Papa George?
No, that sounds about right. The option, it was the committees that decided that food would be best if it was given out as they leave, as a packaged meal from a food truck or vendor, is the way they're going to handle it.
So if you're hungry that night, not attending the prom, what I would suggest you do is just wait, because I'm sure not everybody's going to take their food. But I want to thank the high school administrators, Mr. Papa George, the EOC, and the parents who've been involved with this. I think that a lot of time and effort has gone into making this a safe, fun event for the kids, and try to restore as much as we can of a normal end of the school year, particularly for our seniors.
And it will be one cohort. I know earlier, there was conversations of splitting the class.
It's one cohort, yep.
It will be one cohort, everyone together.
Yep. And I did hear, one other thing I want to comment on, just end of the year activities, Mr. Hassett's let me know before the meeting started, or started, that the, both high schools have engaged over the past few weeks with graduates of the schools who have come back to speak to the seniors, speaking virtually to them, but sharing with them their stories of what they've done, postgraduate life, speaking very highly of the experiences they had as students in the Fairfield Public Schools. But that, again, just something that we normally do, adapting to a different environment but making it work. And I want to thank the guidance department staff for pulling that off and making it happen, and of course, to all those people who, alumni who participated in the event as well.
Ms. Max Cunnelly, question?
Just on the topic of wrapping up the school year, three other topics coming off of prom. One, eighth grade dance, two, middle school graduations, and three, since kids can be outside at recess interacting with masks on, what about field days?
We are working with the schools on kind of an application process to make these things work. I will tell you that, well, I can have Dr. Parrish come up and talk about the middle school graduations. We are working on the fifth grade kind of moving up ceremonies. Those are all going to take place outside at each of the elementary schools. They're going to be done in a way that parents will be invited and they keep their social distance from each other. Field days are going to happen. They're working on kind of a rotational basis, so rather than having 200, 300, 400 students on the field at a time, they'll do it in such a way as to keep the cohorts together. But it's, you know, it will be a field day experience, but it won't be typical. And then you mentioned dances. I don't know about dances. Dr. Parrish is shaking her head. I think dances are off the table. But what about, you want to speak to the eighth grade graduation ceremonies?
Yes, the KIA Paris Executive Director of Operations and Processes. So the middle schools have planned their graduation and award ceremony during the same time. On June 15th, 16th, and 17th, they have also identified rain dates or rain, for, you know, in the event it rains on one of those dates that they've selected. So Tomlinson's is on the 15th at 9:30 a.m. Woods is on the 16th at 10:30 a.m. with a rain date in the afternoon for Tomlinson on that day. And then Roger Ludlow is at 9:30 on the 17th with a rain date in the afternoon for Woods. And then on the 18th, they've identified rain dates for all three schools. In the event something happens and the entire week is washed out. So they have planned, which we hope is not the case, but.
You know, it's not like we went through a bad year or anything.
So they are going to have the graduations on the field at Fairfield Ludlow High School. They have mapped it out, working with both Mr. Papa George as well as some of their support staff within the building, in terms of mapping out the seats so that students could be safely spaced apart on the field. Parents would be issued a limited number of tickets to be able to actually sit in the stands and participate and then celebrate during the ceremony. And this plan was also run by the ELC, correct? The ELC, and it was approved by the ELC. So they are in favor of the limited tickets and the outside venue in terms of the ceremony for eighth grade. There is not a plan for a dance.
Any other questions for the superintendent? Moving on to committee liaison reports. Mr. Peterson?
Hi, thank you. Apologies for giving you a printed report. I've gotten a lot of questions about Finance and Budget Committee and our ideas, discussions about structural change. We've talked about it in some capacity at all the meetings that we've had so far this year. And what I wanted to do with this was kind of update you on the status of those conversations. Really, we've been brainstorming, we've been throwing a lot of ideas at Superintendent Cummings, you know, and I've frankly been pleased to see that, you know, some of these things he's anticipated, as you can see in the budget adjustments he's proposed today. This is really not an official document in any sense, but a kind of a beginning of a discussion that I think we're going to need to have. At our last Budget and Finance Committee, Finance Budget Committee, we talked about when the right time might be to bring this to the board for a fuller discussion. We kind of settled on the idea that it would probably come sometime after we're settled with our own budget discussions, so as not to muddle that, because this obviously is, as a beginning, could expand into a large array of topics. But what I wanted to do was kind of begin to focus our discussions so that when it comes time for us to direct staff work in certain directions, we've kind of already laid some groundwork and set some expectations. You know, not everything that was pitched to me by board members is here. Ms. Jacobson pitched me something before the last meeting, but we didn't have time to bring it up at the last meeting, so I didn't include it in this list. But I promise you that we will get to that. And I would encourage everyone, if you have ideas and, you know, if anything on this list sparks further ideas, please bring them to me and we can add them to the discussion going forward.
Through the chair to Mr. Peterson, or just to Christine, the question that I have is, I know when we started talking about some of this during budget season, through the budget process, that there was an acknowledgement that we would need to have a conversation about goals, outcomes, philosophy, meaning, definitions, that kind of a thing, prior to putting together, and I appreciate that this is just a, this is a, you know, brainstorm session, and this is not an official list of anything that, so just to be clear, I appreciate that fact. But before, as you mentioned, we engage in asking staff to do any work or diving deeper into any particular item, that we have the opportunity as a board to set some guidelines and parameters around our expectations so that there doesn't become an inefficiency of your time or of staff's times as well.
Sure. Can I start with that?
Absolutely.
One of the things that we talked about in our last committee meeting at the the suggestion of, of Mr. Cummings was perhaps organizing some kind of workshop format meeting with the full board, with the executive directors, with, you know, perhaps with curriculum leaders, a roundtable discussion to actually talk, like, what are we trying to accomplish? How are we going to, about, go about doing it? I really, I don't want this to seem at all like we're trying to take these decisions away from the board. In fact, I think the exact opposite. I think that the more that we can sit down in that format and talk about our expectations and our thoughts about the process, that, you know, to build consensus among us and among the staff, that's what I'm aiming for. I don't know if Ms. Vitale wants to add anything to that.
Mr. Asa?
Yeah, just from Finance Committee, since I'm on the committee and we did discuss this, I was in favor of, of having a special meeting in a workshop format. And Mr. Cummings actually does have experience with the workshop setting from his time in Milford, and shared some ideas which included setting ground rules and everything like that. So, I think this is something that we definitely should explore, and probably over the summer, start, start having some of these meetings in a different format than we ever have before. Still be a public format, but set up a little different and, and in a true workshop setting.
Ms. Jacobson?
Thank you, and then I appreciate that. So, do, do you think that we need to wait until the summer? Because I know people get really busy and go away and.
Well, I say the summer.
I know how you are about the summer, so.
I say the summer because our next meeting's May 25th and then it's June. So, that's technically the summer to me. So.
Oh, okay, okay.
You know, I'm not saying push it off to August, but to me, summer is Memorial Day, which is a couple of weeks away.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Peterson. And just to further the discussion, I think the board, you know, we had spoken about having a retreat, that we just need to do some work refocusing on a board goal and how we want all of these pieces to fit together. You know, to Ms. Pitco's point, we had our board goal about redistricting, facilities utilization, that we did some work on that in terms of finding a home for Walter Fitzgerald campus, but there were still some open, open questions about that. So, the summer, I know that everyone is busy, but either late June, over the summer, early September, to start, you know, refocusing on work that we did not complete before the pandemic. We have the district improvement plan. We've got some public meetings that have to happen in terms of helping the superintendent with the A R P?
Yes.
The S R, S R three. And this was really, the committee just thought it was important to, just to share with the board some of our initial conversations. Mrs. Max Canelli?
Three points. First of all, and I've referenced this to Mr. Peterson before, but, and this gets to Mrs. Jacobson's point about defining our terms, but I just think as part of the conversation, since we know other boards are also paying attention to this conversation, I just really think we need to move away from the title "structural change." When we had structural change, for example, after our sped audit, it involved hiring. It involved expanding staff. And structure, I think, what we're talking about, if we're being transparent to the public, is economic efficiencies, or whatever term comes out of any definition gathering effort. But I think we really need to consciously move away from structural change because it is misleading. So, I'm just going to throw that out there as something I think we need to consider. Second, through the chair to Mr. Cummings, the, the pre-K program referenced on the handout, number five, which I love the idea, and I know I love it because I've brought it up before, and I know that there was something state statute related which indicated we couldn't do this. And if there's a way to do it, I still love the idea, but I, and I don't need an answer to that right now, but before time gets expended on something that we can't do.
That was for pre-K five, Jen, sorry.
Was it solely pre-K five? Okay, good. Excellent. I take that back. And then the third thing regarding the workshop, I just toss out there as a suggestion, and I won't go any, go any further with this unless it's the will of the Finance Committee or whomever. I don't know if you are of any interest in getting any other stakeholder input on such a workshop idea. And I say that as I've already brought up, for example, the RTM Education Subcommittee that I'd wanted to engage you with in terms of the district improvement plan. And I didn't know if that was a logical place to get any other community ideas, or it could also just as easily be, please send us your ideas and we'll bring them to the full board. But if there were an interest in that or to the Finance Committee, I just hope somebody would let us know. Thank you.
Any other committee reports? Mrs. Kevor?
Yeah, we had, the Mill Hill Building Committee met earlier this evening, and just wanted to give an update. Basically, they're about 50% done with the project, and we are at about 50% of funds expended. So, the plan moving forward is to have the bulk of the project done by November, and it will be complete by spring of '22. And one thing that was mentioned was the possibility of having members of the committee and members of the Board of Ed, if any are so interested, to tour the current site next week. So, if board members could just email me if you're interested, what your availability is. They were looking probably to do it after school. Obviously, can't do it during the school day with students in the building, but the hopes would be to do something after school. So, if there's any day next week that is or isn't good for you and you're interested in taking a quick walk around Mill Hill, please email me as soon as possible so I can get back to the co-chair, Jason Lee. And, you know, obviously, this was a really very sad meeting in a lot of ways because it was the first one without Tom Quinn as the chair. Jason Lee and Melanie Rogeri, who were the co-vice chairs, are now going to be co-chairs of the committee moving forward. And, you know, the goal of the committee is to just finish this and have it be a project that, you know, Tom would be incredibly proud of. So, and I think they're headed in the right direction, so.
Thank you. Any other committee reports? Ms. Pitco?
So, I mentioned in our last meeting, CES purchased a facility. Their closing is shortly, so at our next meeting, I'll actually get to announce where and what it is and the prospect of it. They will be having an open house, and you will be getting an invitation to come and tour the facility and hear of all the new exciting programs there. I can't tell you much more because the closing hasn't happened yet.
Thank you. There was the Board of Health, Mrs. Max Canelli, go ahead.
Just in policy, just to update the board on two things. First, we continue have had, we've continued to have discussions with staff regarding the brand-new grading policy, which is months away from being done. But again, I just wanted to reiterate both staff interest and the Policy Committee's interest, that if anything occurs to board members, if you could still, please continue to send us to, to us. And Mrs. Vitale, thank you for sending us your input. And secondly, one thing that we will be looking to do either at our next meeting or the one after that is reexamine the COVID policies. If you remember that at the top of our policy page, we have, what is it now, 11? I think we have about 11 policies which are all set to automatically expire on June 30. And I just thought it would be important for us to take a look at them as a committee and possibly think, because there could be some that are of value there, and that the possibility of extending some of them, we haven't gone any further than just that that's a topic we will be addressing. And just to alert the board that there is that possibility for June votes of extending some of those COVID policies.
There was the Board of Health meeting last night. As I hope, as everyone knows, the Pfizer vaccine has been approved for 12 and older. The Health Department was quick to set up clinics for Thursday and Friday. I spoke to Sands this afternoon. 850 people had already signed up out of 1,000. Ms. Vitale might even have more updated information than that, but the response was, was quick, which was great to hear. We are now in, Fairfield is in the orange zone after being in red since October, so that's great news. The numbers keep on trending downward in terms of vaccinations, at least, the exact number is somewhat unsure, depending on the date you look at, but sounds like anywhere from 60 to 70% of Fairfielders have received their first dose of the vaccine, which is also great news. And, you know, just, it's looking good. So, I just want to thank, thank the Board of Health again. And just for everyone, tomorrow is school nurse appreciation day. So, please take a minute to check out social media. Right, it's Wednesday. It was, yeah, I think that's what they said, tomorrow. No, that's nurses. That was nurses last week. This is school nurses tomorrow. School nurses tomorrow! And there's going to be some, check out their social media. And, you know, if you see your school nurse tomorrow, I'll send a thank you. And on behalf of the board, to our school nurses, thank you for, for all the work this year, especially with the contact tracing. You were just key to keeping our schools open, to keeping our kids healthy. We know it was a long year, and we really, we couldn't have done it without you. So, we hope that you enjoy your day tomorrow, and we appreciate you.
Ms. Max Canelli?
I just want to refresh my memory, the memory of the public. And am I still correct that with the quarantine rules, anyone who has been vaccinated, and that would be adults down to 12 years old, that if they are two weeks past their second shot, that quarantine rules do not apply to them in the event of contact tracing?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
And just to follow up on that, just, if you have, your child has been vaccinated, just to send and copy that to the school nurses, which would also help in terms of contact tracing. Mrs. Jacobson?
Can I, in, since we're on this topic, where is Fairfield at in terms of looking at or reassessing, I don't know if you actually know the answer to this question, or we have to go through Sands or Jill, but the seven-day with a test for quarantine rather than the 10 days, which we can do, but we're not doing. So, I'm just wondering, are we looking at changing that as things get better, or is that going to be to the end of the year or whatnot?
I don't know if it's going to change before the end of the year. I think that the, there's been some information that we've seen people who've developed symptoms after the 10. And I would say, just two weeks ago, we did just an informal poll among the superintendents, and every district around us is still doing the 10. I think there's a reluctance to go shorter at this point and kind of see where we are by the end of the school year. The positive trends, though, you know, that continues, there may be some reexamination of that.
Yeah, because I'm just curious, based on, you know, the reports in terms of people who were testing positive after that. I mean, I know it's all complicated in a manner. I was just wondering, it's just three extra days and of being out, and can be five days if it goes over the weekend. So, just if we had any further thoughts on that. So, just bringing it up. Thank you.
Can I, Ms. Vitale, I would say to anybody who, I know I heard from several parents today that were, that tried to get their children appointments and were struggling with the VAM system. And I would tell you that just, if you're willing to travel, I was able to get my two 12, my two middle schoolers' appointments at the Yale campus through MyChart immediately. In fact, they're going with my oldest son, who was going for his second dose tomorrow, Friday. I was able to get them at the same time at that campus, so, for their first dose. So, just keep looking because there's a lot of appointments available if you're willing to go outside of Fairfield.
Yeah, and I will just echo that for my middle schooler. Before I knew that the Fairfield Health Department opened up, I'd also made an appointment through MyChart through Yale New Haven. So, if that is something that is of interest to you, you know, just keep on checking. Open board comment? Mr. Asa?
I just wanted to say thank you to all the PTAs. Last week was Teacher Appreciation Week, and I think the PTAs at all the schools did a rock-star job recognizing our, our staff. So, thank you to everybody.
Mr. Peterson?
I just want to say that Fairfield Ward is going to put on a production of Sunday at the Park with, at the Park, in the Park with George. Friday, Saturday, Sunday, I believe the Friday, Saturday ones are at seven, and the Sunday one is at 7:30. It's going to be in the Ward Courtyard, so outside, if I'm not mistaken, it's a $10 o'clock, or $10 ticket. Bring your own chairs. And I hear the second act is going to be fantastic.
Anybody else? I'd just like to say also for PTA, the Reflections Contest, we had many winners in Fairfield. And just check out the CTPTA website just to, to see some of the artwork and just to see so many students at all levels being recognized in literature, dance, film, music. So, it's really, it was great to see our kids still being involved in these programs and being recognized. Public comment, for anyone who is still listening and would like to give comment on any of the agenda items covered tonight, you can email to the public comment email or submit comment through the form on the website. And with that, a motion to adjourn. Mr. Asa, seconded by Mr. Peterson. All in favor? Motion carries nine zero. We are adjourned.